Today is the October 5, 2020 Board of Commissioners of Radnor Township meeting. Before we get started today, I'm going to note that on the published agenda, Consent Item C, that's Item 2C, there's a request from staff to pull it from the agenda altogether, so we will not be discussing it. And Item 3E, Resolution Number 2020-105, Eastern University Temporary Trailers, there's been a request by the applicant to pull that, so we will not be discussing Item 3E. If you are here or watching for either of those two items, you will be disappointed, and you can tune out now. Otherwise, I will make notice of the executive session that was held on September 24, 2020, during which we discussed matters of real estate, personnel, and litigation. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to public participation. Seeing none, I will move to consent agenda. Is there any item that a Commissioner would like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will move for the approval of the consent agenda with the exception of Item C, which has been pulled by staff.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Committee reports. Item 3A, Discussion of a Wayne Post Office Building. Mr. Brosman, that's you. You are back. I understand that there are some changes to the plan that you have, and you've had a chance to speak with some residents, and you'd like to bring the changes and the resident feedback to us again.
Yes, good evening. I'm George Brosman. I represent the owners of the property at 108 West Wayne Avenue. One of the principals is behind me, Wade McDevitt. He's a township resident also. We had been in front of the Township Planning Commission previously, the Township Community Development Committee previously, and I believe this board previously to discuss a zoning hearing board application that my clients filed to rehabilitate this building, which has stood vacant in the heart of Wayne for some time now. This is the building behind the post office. We had quite a bit of support for the project, which initially involved adding a second story and converting the entire use of the former industrial postal sorting facility into an office use. We do know there was some more limited concerns raised about parking in the area. We know parking is often a concern in Wayne, and in addition to some community outreach we've done, even though we thought the parking would work out fine due to the walkability of the area, public transit, the fact that we were adding striped parking to the property, and also because an office use has a different peak parking demand time than others, we thought, and there's a large availability of other parking spaces in the area, we weren't concerned that there would be a parking problem. However, given the concerns that we did hear, my clients have made a substantial amendment, and they're proposing at this time to completely eliminate the second floor that they had proposed to add to that building. That essentially cuts the project in almost half. We're still going to do all the other features of the project, and I'll run through this quickly, because you've seen it before. They're still going to make a big investment in the building. They have a tenant already to move in that we could tell you about. It's an existing tenant already in downtown Wayne that needs a new, larger home. They're going to beautify the building. We're going to stripe more parking, add a little more additional landscaping, so we hope that it will be a win-win. We had this slide presentation, which was similar to before. I won't go through every slide, but this orients you to the property in question. It's behind the post office, which is, the property's highlighted in yellow. Here's a photo of the one-story vacant building, looking from West Wayne Ave. You can see the library in the right. Here's a rendering of what they would propose to make it look like. We think a substantial upgrade and investment in the property. This is looking from that same view on West Wayne. Here's what you're looking at today from South Wayne, taken near the Radnor Fire Department. The building is in the back there with the industrial-looking garage door and roofed in loading dock area. This is what my clients would like to make it look like, a rendering, you know, making it a very nice investment there, eliminating that loading dock area in favor of a lot of nice windows and a really nice look. This is basically the proposed floor plan. What was on top was the second floor that they're no longer proposing. We have in front of the zoning board the relief that we're seeking, relief to use the building as an office use, and relief on the location of parking, and as to the number of parking spaces, which, as we said, we're substantially reducing the need for parking here. This is the site plan of the way the building is today. This is the proposed site plan with some more striped parking added, and some greenery highlighted that we can add, a little bit of green. Here was the parking chart that we showed you last time. The middle is crossed out. That's what it would have been if we had added the second story, 18,900 square feet, a gross area of 15,120. And the bottom is now what we're proposing with the first floor. You can see the parking, under the code goes down by over half. We did have a parking study done in the area by Frank Tavani before COVID hit. He had counted spaces in the area, and he looked at ULI, what the parking demand would be in the area, or for an office use, I should say. And the office use generates a relatively low amount of parking spaces needed, and Mr. Tavani showed that there were numerous parking spaces available. And then the last thing we had on the slide before, there is already a program in place that's in place in Wayne, the use of smart cards, where people can purchase these to use parking, and we'll be presenting to the zoning hearing board as a proposed condition of approval that this property would purchase five parking smart cards to go on top of our parking spaces that were added, and we would have that as a condition that we would propose to the zoning board if they would be willing to approve the use. We don't really think they're needed, but it's an extra level of protection. As I said, the business is already in downtown Wayne. I think they're at a site that really doesn't have the parking that they would have here. I'll let Wade say a few words about that and add to anything else that I missed. We would ask that you, you know, not oppose our application to the zoning board. We'll go there, and hopefully they'll have to decide whether we should get the relief. I believe we should be entitled to it. Converting a long vacant building, I think we can meet the relief. We would even hope, I don't know if the board ever supports an application, but we would hope this would be something the board would actually support, given this, especially given this difficult time. But we would certainly ask that you not actively oppose this application. With that, I'll ask Wade to chime in.
Good evening. Our prospective tenant is a company by the name of Two Paper Dolls, a longstanding tenant located in Wayne for approximately 15 to 20 years. Started their business off of North Wayne Avenue, relocated approximately six years ago to the space, the old Wayne Toy Town space, so over Bangin' Olson and Pipeline Taco Building, have run out of that and would be occupying our entire structure, and are anxious to get there. It's a fantastic story. Thirty-three percent of 33, actually close to 40% of our employees currently take a train to work, and we're excited to have her as a tenant and anxious to get going.
Is there any Commissioner questions or comments on this? As I understand it, what you're asking us to do is to vote on, or re-vote on sending the solicitor to the ZHB hearing, which is scheduled now for when?
The hearing is scheduled, I believe, for October 15, and yes, we would ask that you not oppose that.
Okay. I will so move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
Well, yeah. First of all, what about, you said we were going to have questions, and then you changed it to a question about opposing or not opposing an application, so which one are we on?
So I think the purpose of their presentation was they wanted us to vote on this motion in order to open it up to comment under our rules. I figured I'd make the motion and get a second to see if there was the appetite, so we didn't waste the time. Since there is a motion and a second, you can ask any question with respect to the presentation, the motion that's on the floor, whatever you want.
All right. I think that we should not have any kind of a vote without putting that on the agenda. I'm surprised that we have a discussion item, and then we're being asked to vote on whether we're going to oppose or not oppose. I guess the more proper motion would be, do we rescind our prior motion to send the solicitor to oppose? And I guess it's the same thing, it's just inartfully stated as it is. First question, what's the old square footage that was proposed versus the revised applicant square footage? And what is the existing square footage again?
Yeah. As far as your first point, Commissioner Booker, I don't care how it happens. I will note that when the board discussed sending the solicitor in the first place, I don't believe that was on the agenda. We were not notified, and this does appear here, but however you want to phrase it, that would be good.
Well, enjoy, but I think you were notified because you were here that night.
I wasn't here that night. I saw it on a video later when I watched, but in any event.
Okay.
To answer the question, we have here in this chart, the top says existing building. It's approximately 8,750 square feet gross area. Under the Township Ordinance definition of floor area, it says that you look at 80%, so that's 7,000 square feet. There were about 54 employees that worked at this facility, and we do the parking calculation. On the bottom now, we're showing that the gross area is 10,037 for a net of 8,032. It's a slight increase of 1,000. What that is, is in the top, the photographs show.
I think more succinctly, we're going, to answer your question more succinctly, we're going from what was. Excuse me. More succinctly, we're going from a property that was proposed, 18,900 square feet, to 10,037 square feet. On that basis, from 15,150 square feet to 8,000 square feet.
Right.
Right, so basically, the original proposal was 18,000, and now we're at 10,000.
Yes, sir.
And so the original proposal on parking was, was how many, I guess, what was the original proposal on parking, and what is the proposal on parking right now that is, as far as what you're building and what's public parking required?
So the chart here, Commissioner Booker, the original use generated a requirement of 62 spaces. What is, what we were proposing was at 61 spaces with the 18,900 square feet. What we're showing here now is, under the code, we went from 61, that would have been required technically, to 33, so we've almost cut it in half of the relief we're seeking.
33, okay, 33.
Of course, the property is non-conforming to the parking requirements, so that's what we're going to the zoning board to continue and actually decrease significantly the parking nonconformity.
So it's, but again, the issue is, parking required is 33, not the, it's not a difference of five, it's a difference of 19. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Well, if you look at, if you imagined that the property was an open field today and had no use, and then you put this use on there, yes, but what we're saying is, there's already a building there, it has a parking nonconformity, and we are substantially decreasing that, just as many of the buildings in Wayne that were repurposed did the same kind of thing. They had a nonconformity, and it was allowed to be continued or reduced upon a change of use.
Understood, understood. And you went through that last time. What is the basis then for five, didn't you say five smart cards? Why not 19 smart cards?
Well, we thought five was a reasonable number. As I said, we didn't think, as a practical matter, any were needed.
How'd you come to five?
We thought none were really needed practically, and many businesses in Wayne are not required to have any, so in addition to basically cutting the whole second story off, we added a belt and suspenders and thought it would be reasonable to agree to purchase five. There was no real magic to that. Our traffic engineer, according to the ITE standards, said that there would be a generation of 24 spaces. We have 14. There was 10, so we basically took that in half and had five, because these numbers don't count people who take transit, things like that, and there's many spaces available. So there was no real magic to it, but that's how we came to it.
And people take transits one day, and then some days they'll drive, and they change where they live, and they start, you know, so it's, so that kind of thing can happen. I think maybe a little bit more than five, maybe 10 would probably be better. Also, on this drawing right here, the existing mail facility still has an, not an awning, but a causeway going to the old building. Is that going to be removed, or is that, it looks like it remains?
That's owned by the post office. We don't control that property. We don't control that part of the building.
So it's going to go all the way to the property line like that?
It does today, and it will continue to, unless the post, unless the post office chooses to remove it.
And that won't cause any problem for you, you don't think?
It's a sealed-off corridor on our side.
Also, when we, when we voted on this, I guess, or got the sense of the board on this, if you recall at the time, George, it was going before the board of the zoning hearing board, and it had never come before the Board of Commissioners, and that meeting was the, was the last meeting before your original planned date. That's why it came before this board. And I thought you were here, but in any event, Eli was here. We did have, we did have, the developer was represented at the time.
I don't want to quibble about it, it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
We weren't here at the first time, but we did come back. We came to your community development meeting, and we did come back.
Yes, you did.
To the board one other time, but it's neither here nor there, but we appreciate the board giving us so much opportunity on this to discuss it. It is an important project to.
It is an important project. My only concern is, is that we didn't tell the, so when is, your meeting is October 15, right?
Yes.
So we have a meeting, we don't have another meeting, again, before this, so this is the only meeting we have.
But you didn't tell anybody before when you were going to oppose it, and we've had three meetings now discussing this. We've sent out notices for the zoning.
I understand, George, but remember at the time, the developer was going to the zoning hearing without coming before us, and had gone to the planning, was going straight to zoning, so this is a little different situation. I think it's, I think it's different.
Yeah, that's the procedure and the ordinance that we followed with the direction of staff.
Well, what about, what about the neighbors, though, who don't know that we have this vote before us today? Right now, they think that we were going to oppose this.
I don't think they think that. I don't want to speak for them, but there was never a notice of that to them. They've been getting notices of my zoning hearing. I've mailed them out twice now, and they can come to the zoning hearing and express any issues they want. We expect a good amount of support.
No further questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Larkin, just a question on process. So this was added to the agenda on Friday. How come, one, there was no further information as to what we would be discussing, and two, if they had a slide presentation, that was not included in the plan, in the agenda either?
So it was actually added to the agenda on Thursday. I requested it on Wednesday, but I didn't get it in before the agenda went out, so I just got to it late, but I did make the request on Wednesday, and it was amended on Thursday. As to why the presentation wasn't included, just because they didn't give it to me?
Yeah, we didn't have it, but it was basically, it's basically the same one that we've submitted to you before. We took the second story off and changed the rendering and added the supplemental parking data.
Exact amount of those two slides.
And when you said you've talked to neighbors, how many, how many neighbors? So in our packet, we get all the people who want to support the project. Am I assuming there's 100% support? Is there some opposition?
I don't know if there's 100% support. We've spoken to the Radnor Fire Company. We understand they're not opposed. We got a letter from the Golis family. We've mentioned to, we've mentioned to other people, we've been, this was noticed in Commissioner Booker's community meeting. Notices went out, and I believe there were mostly supporters. I know Mr. Gammmer had some concerns. He's here, I spoke with him. I'm hoping that our substantial change for eliminating the second floor will address his concerns. I don't know if they have. The Wayne Business Association has been in support, so I can't tell you that we don't have.
So you haven't had direct conversations with neighbors living in the neighborhoods?
We have had some, but we thought, quite frankly, that taking the whole second story off and just basically renovating a long vacant, quite frankly, unattractive building would address the concerns we had, and there is notice that's gone out twice now for the zoning hearing, and they will be able to come to the zoning hearing and express their views if they're against it or for it. They'll have every opportunity to do that.
Commissioner Abel, can I, point of order, real quick. You just stated that the Radnor Fire Company does not oppose this and is in support of it. Your exact, your exact words.
I didn't say in support. I said I was under, of the understanding they had no opposition.
That, I'm sorry, that's not what I heard. I heard that you said that the Radnor Fire Company does not oppose this and is in support of it. To be clear, to be clear. Radnor Fire Company is a non-political organization. I understand that you've reached out to them.
Right.
Okay? Radnor Fire Company does not support, nor are they opposed to this plan. Non-political, they have no, no dog in this hunt whatsoever, so I want to be very clear about that, in terms of directive on that, and make sure that the record reflects that they do not oppose and they do not support this.
I thought I had stated that. If I misstated support, that was absolutely incorrect.
Thank you.
I was advised of that same thing, and if I said that by mistake, I didn't believe I did, but if I did, that was completely incorrect, and I was meaning to say, a meeting was held, and we weren't aware of any opposition.
Thank you.
I also just want to say, I think this is a much better plan. This is, this is much better, and it really reflects listening to my committee and to the Board of Commissioners and to the people, and looks much better, looks much better. So really like what you've done. Again, my issue is, did we give everybody, did we tell them what we're going to do? Because we said we were going to oppose it before, and that's, that's my concern.
Commissioner Abel, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Reclaiming my time, and Commissioner Endri, I appreciate the clarification on that. I mean, I'm still not hearing definites. I mean, we've reached out, you can't tell me who you've spoken to, how many have supported, how many have opposed. I have had conversations with neighbors who live in the neighborhoods who are not, who still have concerns with this project. I didn't have this plan in front of me, so I don't know if there's the same opposition. I mean, that would have been nice to have, but I'm going to stand by my previous vote. You know, we're still asking for 19 additional parking spots. If, I mean, to me, it's short-sighted that we're going to give, you know, 19 to a client who may not be here in five years, so is the next client that comes in, are they going to need additional parking spots? What's the long, I mean, we, I've never heard, I've.
It survives a client.
I've never heard a long-term plan, so every company that comes here and needs additional parking spots, at some point, do we have the parking spots to accommodate all these businesses? And if we don't need 19 parking spots, just get rid of the, get rid of the formula. I mean, it's, it's got to be a discussion, but it doesn't start with giving waivers here. It starts with having a long-term plan that identifies exactly what we need and what type of businesses we're trying to bring in, and if it's, if retail's not it, and this, and the way the world's going a different path, let's, let's have that discussion and rewrite the code. But I don't, I'm not in favor of just giving waivers to every prospective client that comes through here.
Ken?
Are we, we're not giving a waiver, are we? We're just deciding on whether or not we're going to.
Right.
Send the solicitor to oppose this. And can you just clarify for me? So your chart is just a tad bit confusing. Is it an additional 19 spots that you need? So you have 14 on the site, but you need 19 additional?
The literal interpretation of the zoning require us to have 39, 33 spaces in total. We have 14, we have a lot on site. So by code, you'd be required to have 33 spaces. We're supplementing our 14 by agreeing to add additional five spots. Five, five spots through town.
With the car.
With monthly parking passes.
Okay.
Right, and the zoning board, we're asking to consider that. As they did, I think I found seven or eight other appeals, and I have a memo I'll be submitting to them, where they basically allowed existing buildings in Wayne Business Overlay District to be rehabilitated and reused that had a parking nonconformity, as long as they weren't increasing the degree of nonconformity. So if they don't grant that type of relief, and it will be up to them whether they do, but if they didn't, I would submit that these buildings would be sterilized. You basically couldn't use them, and then they would just sit vacant, so I think that's in part why the board has looked favorably the zoning board in the past, especially the key being, we're not increasing the nonconformity, we're greatly decreasing it.
I'd just like to say, I've been, you know, I've heard several of your presentations now. I like this project. I think what's there now is an eyesore that's been there for years and years. I like that this is going to bring people into the downtown Wayne during the day, using the restaurants, shopping in the storefronts. I think it brings some more life into the, into the business district, and right now, I think the restaurants would love to see, you know, 20 more people having lunch in town. So I appreciate what you've done to shrink the project. I liked the two-story as well, but this, I think, addresses a lot of the concerns that were raised, so I want to thank you for going back to the drawing board on that. And I don't go to Wayne all the time during the day, but I think that the combinations you're making about buying five spots, and then there is paid parking on the streets. I know that we went into a big analysis about where exactly some parking was at the community development meeting, so I know that you've been thinking about it, and you thought very creatively about how to find solutions. I think the benefits outweigh by far a few extra cars parking during the day, so, thank you.
I'd just like to say that my comments stand from, from your previous presentation. I was for this project when it was two-story. I'm for it when it's a one-story. As I said before, I have lived within a six-block proximity to this building for more than half of my life. It has been an eyesore for that entire time, when it was used, when it's not used, you know, it sits there. I walk Wayne sometimes twice a day. I talk to the business owners. I have yet to hear any opposition to this project whatsoever, and I think that the quibbling over parking spots is just completely misplaced on this. There are more parking spots than we know what to do with right now in Wayne, given the current economic situation, and the business owners are all in support of this. It is going to bring bodies to Wayne that are sorely needed, and the empty retail space in Wayne right now should have us all in this room, quaking in our boots, because it's unbelievable how much empty retail space there is in Wayne right now. I was for this project before, I'm for it now, and I've yet to talk to anyone in the community that has anything bad to say about the revitalization of this property, so I applaud you for it.
Thank you.
One comment on Commissioner Endri's. I have heard from at least one of the business owners in Wayne, the issue with the retail, they feel is that there needs to be free parking that turns over for retail, and this will only further pressure that. I don't think anybody has a problem with using that building, who would? But the retail issues are, they want, they want to need free parking that they, that can turn over several times an hour. That will help retail, and that's what they're looking for, and that's not something that's for this developer, but that's something for this board to consider.
Okay, I think every.
Can I just ask one question? So if this goes to zoning hearing board, and they decide to grant the relief that you're looking for, and then it comes back to us, or it still needs to go to, I'm assuming additional processes through here, maybe there's a way we can talk about, you know, spaces within the lot that we're going to be redoing in that spot, that's, hopefully, we can get our stormwater project going there. So maybe there's a way to talk about some sort of relationship in that way. I hear what Commissioner Booker is saying about, you know, the. Booker is saying about, you know, the turning over for retail, but let's be honest, that lot down there is not usually very full. So, I think that even on a good day with no COVID. So, maybe there's a way to talk about that.
I hope our actions demonstrate a willingness to listen and moderate and adjust accordingly. So, we're, we're trying to accommodate, you know, what you see as the needs.
It's a beautiful building. You've done a nice job.
Thank you very much.
I think everybody's had a chance to talk, so is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
Hi, Baron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. First, I'd like to echo a thank you for the developers for listening. George did reach out to me, and we had a conversation about other possibilities for this, because, yes, I was, unlike Commissioner Mike, Commissioner Endri, I was opposed because of the parking issues up, up front. It's a little hard to, to take everything in, because, again, is nothing part of the packet to say, yes, that this will solve all the problems. You know, I might still have some questions. Actually, the one question I have is, will you need, are you existing nonconformity for the height, or will you also be asking for a variance on that with the redevelopment?
I didn't know if I heard the end there, but the, the height of the building will remain the same, so I don't think any relief is needed.
Kevin, can, just with the redevelopment, because it, minimum, it's, it's a weird situation where there's a minimum of 30 on that, which is, which is part of the argument for the, the second story last time. And what I've also heard, yes, that notices are sent out for the zoning hearing board, but anybody that knows the history at this point would just assume that when the zoning hearing board meeting takes place, the solicitor was in place to oppose that with, you know, no note, with, without knowing that this is going to take place. And I said this at the last meeting in terms of, at the very least, having the commissioners notify their constituents that something like this would be on the agenda for them to, to weigh in on it. And it said, I'm trying to weigh in on it, but I'm just trying to assimilate everything from just this 10-minute presentation from afar. I might be totally in favor of this now, but it's very hard for me to say. What I would, what I would ask, based upon, again, not necessarily notice out, is if the applicant be willing to go to the November zoning hearing board, put a, put a, a request for a tabling at the zoning hearing board, so that the commissioners could notify their constituents, and we could actually have this on, I guess, the 26th? Is that the 27th? Whatever the meeting is, the next one. In order, in also order, so I can take a look at the plan in, in more detail, because, yes, I was opposed to the, to the first, to the first iteration. I don't want to get lost in the fact that this is a much better plan. I compliment the developers and, and George for reaching out and listening, but it's just 10 minutes of presentation to try and make a decision from a reversal of what I thought before. Thank you.
Would it be possible to get that, the presentation that you just provided, and we could post that on the township website? Is that possible?
It's fine with me to do that if you guys are willing. It's obviously your IP until you give it to us.
We're happy to give that to Baron, and Baron, I'm happy to speak to you before the zoning. We would like to not delay the zoning. We've already delayed it a few times. Nobody's fault.
Understood.
But we'd like to keep moving forward, but Baron, I'd be happy to go over it with you.
Lisa's request was a little different. She was asking if we could put it on the township website, so that everybody could see it.
I think the renderings, I'm not sure you need, do you need the entire package, or the renderings of the new proposed structure?
I think that-
So, we'll, we're happy to do that. We'll, we'll send you the renderings, so you can give them visibility.
Great. Thank you.
And I would just mention that I think they've, they've come and presented several times, have been really open. I think there has been opportunity for people who are interested to learn more. I would like to see it move forward.
Again, we haven't had any comment on this particular plan, and it still is deficient on parking. And so, again, that's, I think Baron had a good idea. If we could delay it to November, that would be the key, but I understand you wanted to go forward. But because we haven't, it still is noncompliant, I, I won't be able to change what I, we, we had proceeded with prior.
Is there any additional public comment?
Take this off of it. Okay, all right. Hi, William Rouse. Live in the township and work in the township as well. Need my address or anything, or? Okay, all right. Atterbury Road. So, I live in the township, work in the township. I come to here for lunch all the time, come here on the weekends with my four kids, my wife, and I think it's a great addition to our community. I mean, I go by that place all the time. My accountant's on that same road, so I go up to see him on, on that little street there. And significant improvement to what we currently have from a township standpoint. You know, you see it from the field every day. You're out here playing. Well, we used to play here every weekend with our kids, you know, on the field, behind it, looking out there. And it's such a significant improvement. And I have to say, during the day, when I come here during the week to have lunch, or, or go into one of the shops, there's adequate parking everywhere. I can't, I can find parking anywhere I want to find parking. What I hear from shop owners I know, and restaurateurs I know, is they need more people in their shops during the day. They need more people in their shops during the day, in the restaurants during the day to eat. And, you know, a project like this, which probably, I guess, has, you know, same amount, or, you know, maybe a little less workers than were there in the post office days, they do have the disposable income to go spend in our shops and our stores. And to the point mentioned, I think Mr. Booker, you know, our shop owners need it, or, or Mr. Endrielli, I'm not sure which one said it, but I think this is a really, a big help, because it is scary to look at what's happening to our, our retail here, that this is really a great addition, too. As a resident, I think this is a great, a great addition, and something I'd be proud to drive by, walk by, and, and, and look at, and hopefully you'll all consider it. All right? Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will call the vote.
Can you restate the, the vote, the question?
Yeah, I was just about to explain. This is a little bit more complicated, since we've already voted in the past, so I'm going to say, an aye will be a vote to rescind our prior vote to send the solicitor to the ZHB meeting. A nay will be a vote to send the, the solicitor to the ZHB hearing. We do not have the authority, as the developers know, but for the sake of the public, we do not have the authority to approve this plan. It would have to go to the ZHB. The only thing that we are voting for now, or against, is to send or not to send the solicitor to oppose the application. So, there's an amended plan. Ayes, we will not send the commissioner. Nays, we, solicitor, thank you. Ayes, we will not send the solicitor. Nays, we will send the solicitor to the ZHB. All in favor of not sending the solicitor, say aye. Aye, all oppose nay. Motion passes to not send the solicitor, five to two.
Four.
Four to two. Oh, Sean wasn't on the dais. Four to two. With Commissioner Farhi abstaining. If we can move to item 3B, ordinance number 2020-19, introduction, authorizing the advanced refunding of the general obligation bond, series 2012, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $18,175,000. Bob or Bill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's ordinance, number 2020-19, as was previously discussed at a prior meeting, was to authorize the advanced refunding to realize savings on the 2012 bonds. This is just the introduction, and it's anticipated that if we authorize the introduction and advertise, we could have bonds sold, to begin the bond sale before the end of the month. And again, this is advanced refunding, is, will, will realize significant savings over the next 15 years.
I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's start asking questions about yield curves.
I, I don't have any question about the yield curve, but what is, what is going to be the amount of bonds to be refunded? Is it the whole 18175, or is it a lower amount that we're actually issuing? And I don't have the, the papers in front of me, so if you could just go through the details of the new issue and the escrow?
Sure. Yes, Commissioner. The bonds to be refunded are just shy of $15 million. And the new debt service will realize savings roughly about $88,000 per year over the next 15 years. Total savings is about $1,476,000. It has a net present value of just over $1.2 million.
And so, the 15 years is the anticipated duration of the refunding bonds?
Correct. Same duration as the existing 2012 bonds.
And so, what is the, the call date on the bonds to be refunded? How long will the escrow be in place?
It will be in place through, well, 2037. Sorry, Commissioners, we have Suzanne Mace here, our bond counsel.
Good evening, everybody. The, the call date on the 2012 bonds is November 1, 2022. So, I think that-
That's a question.
Mr. Tate was giving you the final maturity of the refunding bonds.
Right. So, it's only an advanced escrow for what, a little bit more than a year?
Well, we're 20, about two years.
About two years. Suzanne, how much management of that advanced refunding escrow is required by the township versus bond counsel versus a trustee? Like, what, what, is this extra work for the township in having this advanced refunding?
No, I would say not, because the bond proceeds will be deposited under the escrow deposit agreement at closing, and likely invested in slugs, and will sit there until the call date. So, it should all be put in place at the closing in the fall of 2020.
And it will be basically self-executing without help from staff, and, and without them watching it and managing it?
That's correct. You will hire the paying agent on the 2012 bonds as the escrow agent, most likely, and that escrow agent's job will be to collect the receipts from the maturing securities in the escrow, and then pay the redemption price in 2022, when the bonds are, and to send the redemption notice, and then pay them off in 2022 when they're redeemable.
Is there a premium at 2020, 2022?
I don't have that in front of me, but my guess is no, that it's a par call.
Par call. And can you, for the, for my recollection, what does SLUG stand for, again?
State and love, state and local government's series of U.S. Treasury securities that are specific, were specifically created for the investment of tax-exempt bond proceeds. So, it is a U.S. Treasury security, a, a direct obligation of the U.S. government, so about as safe as you can buy, meaning that you don't have to worry about your bond proceeds being converted into those securities, and then sitting in that escrow, about whether or not you'll have the money when you need it to, to pay the redemption price.
Thank you.
I'll just say, real quick, Bob and, Bob Tate and Bill White, thank you. Anytime that you can save the township $88,000 a year, especially in this environment, I'll speak for the board, and I'll speak for many people at home. Thank you very much. That's great. Great job.
Thank you.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I'm surprised. We usually spend longer on bond issues. I'm pleasantly surprised. I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all oppose nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3C, appointments to various boards and commissions. What is the pleasure of the board? Would you like to do these one after the other, or would you like to do them all at once?
I suggest all at once.
Okay, we'll start with that. I am moving for the appointment of Liam Marston, CFS to Carfac. I am moving for the appointment of Danell Yagaman, MHA. I apologize for butchering names to the Environmental Advisory Council. For an unexpired term to end December 31, 2021. Siddharth Singh to the Environmental Advisory Council, a first term, a term that will expire December 31, 2024. Christina Baschiano, Parks and Recreation Board, first term expires 12/31/25. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry. Is there any Commissioner comment?
I think all these folks are very nice people, and interviewed them all, and was very glad to speak with them, and, and I, I think that they care about the community and, and want to, want to help. For me, I'm, I'm looking for people with a little more experience, a little more time in the community for these posts. So, while I appreciate greatly these folks, and encourage them in their advocacy for the township, and volunteerism for the township, for these particular ones, I'm, I'm, I'm not as comfortable.
Can I just ask you a question, Commissioner Booker?
No.
Okay. So much for transparency.
I guess I'm confused on Commissioner Booker's comments. Do we have other folks that are stepping up and are anxious to interview for these positions?
Yeah, Damian, I just wanted to touch up on that. I, I hear often from certain members of the board that when you have people that want to step up, or that are on board, that we don't want to turn them away. And I have a feeling that essentially that's what we're doing, if we don't accept these people. Are sometimes people more qualified than others, or they have a better skill set, or, I don't want to say a better skill set, but a skill set that we don't currently have on a board, sure. But these are people that want to give their time and help the community, and I think we should be thankful to them and for them.
I, I agree. We should be thankful, and, and I am thankful for everybody who wants to volunteer for the township.
Well, I'm not hearing any additional Commissioner comment. I'll ask if there's any staff comment. Is there any public comment? I will call the vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all oppose nay. Motion passes six to one. Moving on to the announcements of existing vacancies. Do you have that up, Lisa, or should I go?
I thought you were handling this whole thing. Oh, no, I, please.
Okay. Vacancies on various boards and commissions. As of October 5, 2020, we have one vacancy on Carfac, the Citizens Audit Review and Financial Advisory Committee, one vacancy on the Codes Appeals Board, which requires a master electrician, master plumber, or general contractor, one vacancy on the Design Review Board, one vacant, two vacancies on the Harb Board, two vacancies on the Planning Commission, and one vacancy on the zoning hearing board. Item E has been pulled, as I previously announced. Moving on to item F, which is consideration-
I'm sorry, did you, I didn't recall you announcing item E. I thought you pulled two items from the consent agenda. I did not hear about resolution 2015-105.
Yes, 2020-105 was pulled.
You pulled it at the beginning.
The applicant has to withdraw that. Moving to item F, consideration to forward the petition from CG Wayne LLC, zoning map amendment, amending the zoning map of Radnor Township, folio number 36-02-0097810, from PI, Planned Institutional District to R2 Residence District, and folio number 36-02-0097820, from R1 Residence District to R2 Residence District, to the Township Planning Commission, and/or other township boards, commissions, and committees for review and comment. By which I understand, we're basically going to be forwarding this to certainly the Planning Commission, if it is the board's pleasure, and we would want to alert other committees in the township, so that they have the opportunity to weigh in as well if they choose to do so. John, do you want to read us in on this? Should I give background? Is this the Eastern Development?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I can give some background on that, then. As-
I think Dave Falcone is-
Oh, Dave is here.
Is here to address that.
With masks, I can't recognize anybody. You do not look like yourself. I apologize.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all, kind of. So, this is a zoning map change request on the part of CG Wayne LLC, who is the equitable owner of a piece of property that's presently owned by Eastern University. And as we- And as we heard earlier, is zoned, um, PI and then R1. CG Wayne is in the process and I believe they've submitted a land development plan for consideration by the township. The consideration of the plan is contingent on a rezoning. So if the rezoning were to fail, the, the land development plan itself would fail and we're aware of that. As part of our, um, hope to keep things moving, we've submitted this so that the process can start for the discussion surrounding the rezoning. I will tell you that this client has, um, gone to great efforts to meet with the neighbors in that community. I was not a part of those meetings, but they've been reported back to me by both neighbors there as well as the client. They've done, um, many in-person meetings. They've also had Zoom meetings, um, with a couple of groups and they've met with, uh, a neighborhood community association in person as well. They are, um, confident that their plan is a good one and that the process that they've started is a well-vetted process. I will say that this land, all of it, was zoned at one point prior to this residential. And as part of Eastern's acquisition of the property, they had plans to convert it and to use it for other things and ultimately changed the zoning by agreement with the neighbors to IP. I will also tell you that there was litigation surrounding some of that and even to very recently, there was litigation with, with some of the neighbors in Eastern University. As part of this plan, the neighbors are generally, uh, we, we've been told and per their comments, in favor of this plan and, and what my client is proposing here. And as part of that, that litigation has been settled pending this plan moving forward. Uh, we understand this is preliminary and we also understand that the board is taking no action tonight formally to adopt this, uh, map change, but simply to start the process. And that allows the other process with respect to the land development plan to, to move along. Just a little bit of background on the plan itself. It is to develop the property with 20 homes. There'll be single-family homes and they'll be compliant with the proposed zoning. There'd be no zoning relief required. I'll also note that as part of this process, uh, Eastern University and my client have entered into discussions and are ready to enter into a springing covenant that would then ultimately restrict the development of this site at any time in the future to no more than the 20 homes. So we're sensitive to the, the issues with the R2 district and the potential of having additional density. So in order to assure the township that there would never be more than that, Eastern University has agreed to a, a springing covenant that would spring upon the adoption of the ordinance to encumber the entire property. So I think that's the background as, as I know it. Jack, any other pieces you need to know?
Uh, there is one additional agreement that I recall and the mechanics of this, not agreement, I guess, because you don't really get anything until the township approves it one way or another, but, um, the plan was that the land development plan would include detailed drawings of the actual homes.
That's right.
So that the residents were not in a position where they approve of the development generally, but then the developer comes in and builds homes that are significantly different stylistically from what the residents understood. So as a component of the land development plan in this case, you're making a far more detailed application than what normally would expect to see.
Right.
And further binding the developer to the essentially pleasure of the township.
That's correct. And so I, I didn't get into many of the land development specifics to that extent. I figured that would come through with the plan, but the developer has, um, has agreed to those conditions as Commissioner Larkin's just laid out. And I'll also say they've, um, in their, in their discussions with the township and in their presentation, not with the township, but the neighbors and in the presentations they've had with the neighbors, they've gone through actual materials and home, um, home samples and gotten input from the neighbors on the actual materials that the neighbors want to see used on these homes. They've adjusted their plans, they've adjusted their layout, their landscaping, um, all to meet what they've been told from the large, uh, sample of neighbors that have, have come out to voice, um, thoughts in this project, what, what they want to see. So the applicant, I mean frankly, I wish, I wish every applicant would go through this type of a process, uh, prior to submitting an application. I, I think ultimately it will lead to a smoother process, but they've committed to many things with the neighbors based on feedback that they've gotten. And like Commissioner Larkin said, one of those items is in fact the materials that are going to be used, color schemes, stone, um, combinations of both. So, um, the applicant has, has agreed to that. That's correct.
Uh, I will some move, is there a second? Is there any Commissioner comment?
So are we, we're voting? Are we voting or just?
Dave said there's no vote for it tonight.
Yeah, we just-
It's just to send it to the Planning Commission to start the process, that's all.
Yeah, we have to send it to the-
Do we have to vote?
We're not voting on anything today. I guess, we could do that sense of the board?
It says consideration of forwarding. I don't know what that means, consideration. Is that a vote?
Well, what, what's-
It's not necessarily a vote.
What's been filed is a petition to amend your zoning map. And that's a legislative thing that, decision that will ultimately come back to this board, but it's got to go through the process under the MPC.
Where's the petition? I don't, is this the packet that we received? Is there a petition that goes with this?
Yeah, there's a zoning map amendment request that has the-
Okay, so the zoning map amendment request, you mean it's a letter request with some supplemental information? Is that what you're calling the petition?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So if the majority of this board is so opposed to this, uh, that you don't even want to refer it on to the Planning Commission, um, Mr. Falcone's client would probably go away. So this is just a weather forecast that it can go to the next step. It is a legislative decision, ultimately it's up to this board, it's totally discretionary. There's no appeal one way or another, but this just starts the process and it's, I think, good to put it on the record of a meeting that you've got seven commissioners okay with this going to the next step. And that's what this is here for tonight. There's no decision in terms of the substance of what's in front of you, it's just that it can go to the next step under the MPC.
And I, as I understand it, John, and Commissioner Booker, there's no, also nothing binding on this board if they elect to send it to the next step. You're not endorsing the plan or the action, it's just allowing the process to begin.
Commissioner comment? Questions? So first of all, John, I guess by okaying it to the next step, that was, that would indicate that there is some, um, agreement with going forward. So I, I just disagree that that would be the case. But for, for, for Dave-
Yes.
Spring covenant, if this is approved, no more than 20, it's kind of like sleeves of your vest, right? If you approve this plan for 20, then no more than 20 will be built.
Well, that, it's on this plan, but I think under R2 zoning, Rich, there could be the potential at some point in the future that if the site were ever to be scraped, maybe they could get more than 20.
Right.
So they wanted to ensure for the neighbors with the deed restriction.
Understood.
So that's, that's the point.
And I, I'm glad you brought that up, that the R2 issue, because the property before it was planned institutional and even your letter, it was R1 residential prior to being, so why wouldn't it go back to R1? And if it was, if it wasn't R1, I don't think you'd even be able to get the 20. So probably my experience is you need about one and a half or 1.3 or 1. something more than one per acre to get R1 zoning.
So that's correct. So R2 creates the 20 homes that make this project work.
Okay. But R2 would actually be inconsistent with our comprehensive plan because before this was changed to PI, it was R1. So that, that would be my first point. Dave?
Yes.
What, do you, do you object to coming to before community development? This is a zoning map change. This isn't a land development issue before us now. This is a zoning change. Do you, do you object to coming to the subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners, the Community Development Subcommittee?
So this applicant has expressed a willingness to do whatever this board would like it to do. If it's the pleasure of this board for us to appear before a subcommittee, we would appear before the subcommittee.
Well, I, I think that, and, and I have been, I have had been in discussions about this and I haven't been party to any of these meetings. I got one message from one of the neighbors that was vehemently opposed to this development. So I, I don't know, and you weren't, you said you weren't part of it, so neither of us has been a part of the meetings and town halls or whatever that they've done. I would request that we have this come before the Subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners, the Community Development Subcommittee. This is a zoning change after all, which is exactly within the purview of the Subcommittee for Community Development. It's not a matter of going to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is, that doesn't get to the issue of what we're talking about. This is a zoning change that this board needs to approve and zoning hearing board needs to approve. And zoning hearing board, if we approve it, the zoning hearing board, if, if, okay, all right, I take that back.
Planning Commission makes a recommendation, it's got to go to Delaware County too.
Got to go to Delaware County.
Yes.
But we have to, we, we have to show some agreement to change the zoning. Otherwise, they wouldn't do that because it doesn't conform with zoning and it would be a no.
It's an entirely discretionary-
It's entirely discretionary.
When it comes back, when it comes back to the board is when you will get a formal opportunity to vote on whatever comes back to you.
It's a hearing, right, John, when it comes back to this board? It's a hearing.
Well, but before we have, before it goes to the Planning Commission, this board should, should have this, the issue of do we even want to change the zoning? Do we want to change the zoning? And why not bring it before? So I, I request that we have a Community Development Subcommittee to discuss the zoning. And again, especially if, if nothing else, the issue of changing it back to residential is one thing, but why not change it back to what it originally was, not to something different? And so that's, that's my big question. Also, I have questions about, uh, documentation of all the steep slopes on the site and documentation of how those are going to be treated. And, um, in addition to that, I want to have, want to have some information on, on, on why we think that this is a, even a buildable plan under R2 and, and what are the document, and what are the, seeing some of the agreements. Like to flesh all these issues out in a separate meeting and, um, then bring it before the board rather than trying to come in cold with, with some very basic documentation. And especially because there apparently has been a lot more discussions in the public, which I'm, I have not been privy to and I don't think anybody on this board has been privy to.
Right, so I, Rich, I don't agree, I'm sorry, I don't disagree with, um, with some of that. I, I will say that, and I'm, you're aware of this, but I'll say, I guess, generally for the public, maybe who's not, this process is entirely distinct from the land development process that will flesh many of those issues out. This, by changing your zoning, you're not approving a plan. To Commissioner Booker, to Commissioner Booker's point, um, there are certainly land development issues that have to be considered as part of any development and stormwater being one of them, steep slopes, all of those things. This plan that will tie to this map change still has to go through the, the formal process with the township every step of the way. Comes in front of the Planning Commission for a recommendation, comes back to you for land development approval. So there's no side stepping the process as part of a map change. What this map change allows, and Commissioner Booker is correct, it allows a change from a district that would not permit this type of residential development to one that would. And it goes to an R2 district, which this district, district was not previously, to allow for 20 homes because that is what makes this project viable. Now, I will tell you, the initial plan had more homes than that. And it was as a result of the discussions with the neighbors that it was brought down to 20 where there was a tolerance level that they believed this was an acceptable development. Now, I do know that, um, requests were made by this applicant to meet with several of the commissioners individually. Commissioner Booker was one of them. He refused that meeting because he wanted it to come through a more formal process in front of the board. And that is absolutely every commissioner's purview.
I wanted to have it come through as a public meeting with the Community Development Subcommittee.
Sure.
So that there was no back dealing and there's no promises. So I, I don't, I don't like to talk separately with developers about something that's a proposed change, let's do it in public. And I still think that's the way to do that.
And that's what I'm recognizing. So again, this applicant has committed, um, a lot of time and resources to get it just to this point, which is really just at the starting blocks. And what, as I understand it, and your solicitor, uh, Mr. Rice can correct me, but all you're doing at this point is starting the engine on the car in the block to let this process begin. It does not short-circuit any process. It does not, um, create an avenue to expedite and sidestep land development. All of those issues, which are important issues for any plan and for this township, will still be, um, will still be considered and, and developed in front of this board through the normal process. There's no efforts to sidestep.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, sure.
So how big is the land parcel right now we're talking about? Because I don't see it on the, um-
It's in the description.
Nineteen and a half acres. And, um, what's it, what's currently there? Just open space?
It's a parking lot.
Parking lot.
And there's homes as well that they, that the college uses.
So they're going to knock the homes down?
They're going to knock the homes down.
So how many homes are there now?
Believe that there are 14 dwellings and a parking lot.
Okay, so they're going to make it from 14 to 20?
That's correct.
So would they be adding opens, would they be adding permeable, uh, or rather permeable ground if they're getting rid of the parking lot?
So I, I don't, I don't know what the net impervious cover here is. I know that, um, again, very early in the process from the land development side, but I do know that it's an uncontrolled site now. So it will be, will meet all the township requirements for stormwater for sure. There will be landscaping, there's really nothing there now. It's, it was ultimately going to be used just as part of a dormitory and additional classrooms by Eastern when they started the initial process and bought the land. They've abandoned that. I think that was not as palatable to some of the neighbors.
Okay, so, uh, and, and, and I certainly feel, um-
And they'll be taxable.
Yeah, pardon?
And they'll be a taxable entity as well.
Um, I'm not, uh, but the, the, there won't be any capital gains from the sale.
But there'll be a tax-paying contributor.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're dealing with, with 20 homes. So I, I don't look at this, I just look at this as a way to cram, and I'm more residential in a great township. And I don't want that to affect the people that live here. So 20 homes to me means more students in our overcrowded classrooms, schools, uh, more stormwater issues than we have issues every year. I don't know what the open space is. I mean, I can't, um, this, this does not, it's just too small for me to-
It's not, it's not the land development.
I mean, it's, it's, it's just too small. And it means more traffic as well. So, uh, I'm, to send it to planning or to send it to a Subcommittee, I think that's fine, but I, for some, for me, I, I don't necessarily know that I even want to entertain that idea. So I, I would probably move not to send it anywhere. I just don't see enough here where I want to get started. I just don't have the comfort level at this point, so.
Appreciate that.
We had three meetings with residents on this. I had three meetings with residents on this in large groups and I met individually with other residents as well. And I know the developers met separately with residents, um, as well. One of the things that was said at one of the first meetings that we had that has really resonated with me and I think resonated with a bunch of other residents was, um, if, if we had right across the street from us, a bunch of homes, 20 homes, at the time, I think it was 23 homes that we were talking about or 24 homes that we were talking about.
I thought it was more than 23, but yeah, it was something.
And since then, developer has reduced his ask. So if we had 24 homes across the street from us that looked like our homes and had neighbors in them that we were friends with and someone came in and proposed, we're going to bulldoze all of that flat and turn it into a parking lot and it's going to look like the parking lot that we've got right now, is that something that we would want? And the consensus in the room was no, absolutely not. So his question was then, well, if, if we wouldn't want to go from the houses to a parking lot, why on earth would we not want to move from the parking lot to the houses? That got a lot of traction with the residents and the, the real ask then from every single resident who has been in touch with me about this anyway, has been, which is I think maybe 30, 40 residents, there's been a lot of involvement on this issue. The question has been, how do we hold the developers' feet to the fire to ensure that number one, the plan is what we're being promised? And in fact, the plan has improved since that time. They've reduced the total number of houses. And number two, how do we ensure that the houses are built to the specs that we are being promised? The developer has come through with a couple of the different mechanisms that I talked about at the start of this discussion and that you all- about at the start of this discussion and that you also talked about, Dave, at the start of this discussion, namely, there's going to be covenant to prevent additional subdivision in the future so that you couldn't break off a, you know, 15 years from now, you build a in-law suite and then you break it off into a separate development or something, a separate home or something. You can't do that with the springing covenant that you've described. How do we ensure that the homes are built to the specs that we've been promised? Well, the land development plan includes the architectural design. The, the residents that I have talked to are cautious for obvious reasons, but they are, they're not opposed to the plan. So there's been some questions about that or at least some comments about that thus far. And while I'm not going to try and move anybody in one direction or the other right now, the feedback that I have from residents on this project is they would like to see it move forward, subject to the restrictions that they have talked about.
Well, again, Commissioner Larkin, the way we hold the developers' feet to the fire is we control the zoning and they have to conform to the zoning. If we want them to build 15 homes or less, then we put it back to what it was, R1, if, or we don't change the zoning at all. With all due respect, again, I would request that we have a Community Development Subcommittee and Jack, you're on the committee. Let's have a small group of the board go through all these issues and then have the developer come back to the full board with us being able to review with the full board our findings on all of this. And again, I heard about this in January of this year for the first time with very concerned residents. Never heard a word about it. And there was never anything submitted. And I don't know about the land development plan. I haven't seen any of it. This is the first time I'm seeing any of it. And this, this zoning review is a perfect thing for the Community Development Subcommittee to review, especially because to change it to R2 would be inconsistent with our current comprehensive zoning plan.
So I'll just, if I could offer one comment on, that's the second time Commissioner Booker has talked about being inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So this zoning is not inconsistent with your plan because the, it is bordered on two sides by R2. So it is directly adjacent and touching on two sides, the R2 zoning district. So from a map change perspective, there, there are very few map changes that fit more squarely into existing zoning. Now, is it true that it's also bordered on one side by R1? That's correct. And it's also bordered on one side by PI? But to suggest that it's this island that is inconsistent with your prior planning, I believe is not accurate, given your existing zoning map, which we've attached. It is simply different zoning than it is today or than it was. So I don't dispute that at all. What I'm telling you is it's not inconsistent from a zoning perspective and a planning perspective.
Well, again, we agree that it's inconsistent from what it is today and inconsistent with what it was. Therefore, it's inconsistent. So we just disagree on the result. The facts are the facts. But again, let's talk about this.
We're asking for matching.
Let's, 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 let's talk about this at a separate meeting and, and then come, bring back to the board our opinion on it. Because if we send this to planning, they set the form of this development, not the Board of Commissioners. We should be the ones that set the policy and we should be the ones that make the decision.
So I, and I'll respond to that as well because I, I think that's not necessarily accurate in the way this process works. So what happens here, if you allow this process to start, is that this ordinance begins what is generally a relatively long journey that ultimately concludes with a formal hearing in front of this board. But it is not without dialogue between this board and the Planning Commission of your township, which is a relevant dialogue. It, it really has nothing to do with the zoning hearing board because, as you know, that's simply the judicial arm of interpreting your ordinance, which this board creates. So it is incumbent on you as commissioners to decide what appropriate zoning is and then they interpret that. But the process begins by sending this to the county, sending it to the Planning Commission, at which point they will both provide you all feedback. And I have seen this process myself in the recent past, go back and forth between your board and the Planning Commission as the process evolves. And it's also important to note, because I think Commissioner Booker is combining two processes tonight, which is the land development process, which requires certain standards to be met, and a zoning process, which requires other things. You are not, as part of this process, what's before you tonight, approving a land development plan, offering opinions on a land development plan, rejecting a land development plan. You haven't even seen the land development plan, although it's been submitted to the township. So I, I think it's important for the board to understand, and I'm not suggesting you don't, but if there are any of you that this might be your first process, you have to bifurcate it in your minds. There's a zoning map change process and then following that will be a formal land development process. We are not trying to smash the two together. We're, we're not trying to make one move so the other moves. They move at their own speed, on their own tracks. And all that is happening tonight is you're allowing the one track to start. I mean, I guess to the, if you want to say, we just don't ever want to see residential on this piece, then you could say, don't waste your time, developer. And I'm sure my client would be grateful for that early interpretation. I can tell you firsthand that I'm aware there is a large portion of this community that would like to see this property developed in a residential way, away from its existing parking lot stage. And the residents who lived here that engaged in litigation with Eastern are also excited about the possibility of seeing this plan move forward versus what would have been a PI compliant development, which would have been a dorm and additional classrooms. So there are certainly things to talk about here, but I don't want to get off topic and start thinking about land development issues when we're, we're just not there or even thinking about your ultimate decision as a board on the rezoning because we're not even there, there yet. It's turning the key on this process.
Let me ask if there's comment from any additional commissioners who haven't yet spoken.
Yep, just real quick. And Dave, the developer did not reach out to me either.
I, I know they did not. So they reached out to a couple.
I'm, I'm assuming he was counting his votes and I wasn't needed for four.
That's not correct. So they reached out to Rich because he's the adjoining, very close to Rich's ward. This is very close to Ward 2. And they reached out to Commissioner Larkin as the commissioner of, of the wards. So they've had discussions there.
Okay. I, I also haven't been part of any of the, the neighbor conversations.
No.
So, you know, it's, it's hard for me to vote, even if it is just to send it to, send it on to, to committee. I'd be more comfortable if the developer came before the Subcommittee, had that discussion. You know, I could see that, I could watch that video and then we come back here and we, we have the same vote.
I mean, that's ultimately up to this board, Jake. Yeah.
And just one clarification, Dave. You said that land development proceeds only if this is moved forward. So they, they aren't inextric, they are inextricably linked. Land development won't proceed without this proceeding. That's what you said at the beginning.
It, it, they're separate processes.
But, but, but they're separate process, but this starts it, so it's not separate in that it doesn't, it starts it.
That, so it's, that's not correct.
Okay, all right. So again, we just disagree on, you also brought up the detailed drawings of homes and the springing covenants on the 20 homes. So you talked about land development. That's why we're, we're bringing that up. I, I'm, I'm perfectly happy just talking about zoning.
So, no, you're not. And we know that that's, that's not the case.
Don't say what I'm not. I, I am.
Well, no, because.
Don't, don't, don't try to impute any motive on me.
You've taken this down a path, Rich, because you have an agenda to get us in front of your committee and I know that and that's okay. We've already told you, we are very happy.
So it's not an agenda. I don't have an agenda. I'm, I've asked a question.
We are very happy to do whatever this board pleases. And if that is to come back and appear before the Subcommittee, we're happy to do that. I said that upfront. We, we will be at the pleasure of this board.
Don't accuse me of having an agenda. You have an agenda for your client.
I certainly do. I certainly do have an agenda.
Okay, so, so you have an agenda. I have no agenda, but for the people, to do the best for the constituents.
Understood, Rich. We can disagree on that point as well.
We, we can't disagree on that point.
I'm really looking for commissioners who have not yet had a chance to speak. So Commissioner Abel, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I do not.
Okay. Moira, Lisa, Damian, do you guys have anything you want to say?
No, my only comment is I appreciate you spelling out the different tracks in the process. It's much appreciated. So thank you for taking time to do that.
Can I just ask, so you said you've met with the neighbors and I do have some friends over there. And I've heard that you had, the developer has reached out, you haven't, but the developer has reached out. Is one of the things that makes this so attractive, and, and I recall the, a lot of the situation that existed around the time when they wanted to build the dorms and I know the, the upset that existed in that neighborhood over there about that, does this, in their minds, sort of create like a buffer for them between the campus so that the campus doesn't expand more into the neighborhood or?
Well, so there was concern that this was zoned in, you know, institutional and it's a residential neighborhood. So there was a desire to see more residential rather than institutional. So, and there was, as you know, plans to use this in a very institutional fashion that would have certainly changed the landscape of that area. And I don't think that that was palatable. Now, that preexists, that predates my client's equitable ownership of this property, but they certainly were made aware of the situation. And I have reviewed the litigation documents surrounding some of the issues there. So I do know, at the very least, that this is a more palatable plan and development for many of the neighbors. I'm certainly, I can't speak for all of them or, or even those, a majority of them perhaps. But the folks that have engaged with my client and some of which have reached out to me do see this as, as moving in the right direction for development of this property.
Well, I guess I'm, you know, I'm not opposed one way or the other to sending it to planning or having it come between, before the Community Development Board. I'm a, you know, I do believe that I think the committees of the board do serve that purpose. I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Booker that I think it would be, it wouldn't be inappropriate for that to happen, but I'm fine, honestly, either way. I also think that it's really important for the, you know, I, I would like to hear from the Planning Commission on it, so I guess I'm good either way.
John, I asked a question. Is, starting this process, does that foreclose the option to go in front of Community Development as part of the land development process or even as part of this process?
Well, the, the Planning Commission review is mandatory. So, I mean, that's got to be done before it would ever come back to the board. So both of the Planning Commissions. If the board wants to put another layer on top of that, that would be the, the Subcommittee. So my only suggestion or caution about all that is you have a Planning Commission that may have an opinion and a recommendation and you have a Subcommittee that may have something totally different. So you're going to, you know, the Planning Committee, this is their role to, to do this under the MPC, specifically called out. Your Subcommittee, you know, in my view, and this is my view, and I know Rich really wants to have a meeting, but is for things.
I, I had a request, I had a request for a meeting. I, I, I had a specific request for this meeting and upon review, I think that that's a good idea because this is policy, not Planning Commission. This is our board. What does this board want to do on zoning changes?
Rich, let me finish. It'll come back to this board.
It'll come back with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Let's put, before we let, before we hear from them, let's hear from us.
You can ignore, you can ignore the Planning Commission. The Subcommittee.
It doesn't work that way. We don't, we don't.
In my view, it's good for things that haven't been formally filed. You have a formal submission now, a formal filing. It starts the MPC process.
Wait, John, you and Jack said we shouldn't have a Subcommittee meeting when I requested this a month ago because nothing had been filed. Now something's filed, you're saying it shouldn't go before?
Actually, I said that we shouldn't.
Okay, so, all right, so you said it. You said John told you.
But, but it's.
I didn't say John told me. That's my position.
You know, it's, it's up to the board. I just think there's a, there's a risk of competing boards, commissions. I've seen it happen before.
Move we have a Subcommittee meeting, Jack's on the Subcommittee.
So can I just ask, so can you just, John, clarify the, so the process? And Dave, I know, so it would, if we say yes tonight to send it to planning, planning will vet it and then it goes, it will come back to us or then it goes to Delaware County? How does that?
It'll go simult, it'll go simultaneously to the Township Planning.
Can you put your mic on?
It'll go simultaneously to the Township Planning Commission and Delaware County. So, and after it goes to the Planning Commission, it can go to the Subcommittee. You know, a sort of intermediary step, get, get the Planning Commission's, the required rec, the required action under the MPC. Subcommittee's not required, it's optional. And you could do it that way.
So then the Subcommittee could vet whatever the recommendations are from our Planning Committee and Delaware County.
And Delaware County. And then that, you would have those reviews and recommendations before it gets to the full board.
But again, John, it's, the Planning Commission's not required at all unless this board decides to send it. We don't need to consider any zoning change, as you said. So to say that it, you can't say that it's required of the Planning Commission because it's not. It's only if we say we will consider the zoning change. So that's my point. This board ultimately, it's, if this board says, we'll consider it, then it's required.
There's a little bit of nuance to, nuance to this, Rich.
I, I don't, I don't see.
Once he files a formal application, he can go to the Planning Commission whether you like it or not.
Well, why did Attorney Falcone say that the land development can only proceed if we do this?
But if the board, tonight, seven of you or the majority of you say, we don't like this at all, go away, Dave Falcone. He's not going to go to the Planning Commission, but he's still entitled to go, no matter what you say. So as I, as I said when we started out, he's here for a weather forecast, see if there's a majority of the board that like this project so he can go to the next step. But once he files a formal application, which he's done, this petition, he still can go to the Planning Commission.
Well, if he can go to the Plan Commission, why is he before this board? You're talking in circles, John.
He wants, he wants a weather forecast.
Okay.
That's what he wants. This is a fairly typical procedure.
But again, Dave said that this starts the process and you're saying, no, it doesn't start the process, he can start the process on his own.
He can go, he can go to the Planning Commission anyway.
Well, so.
At his risk.
At his.
If you don't like this.
Again, I, I would move that we send this to Subcommittee for review before sending it any, through any other township boards or commissions.
Commissioner Larkin, can I, can I just ask a question a different way, which I think Commissioner Brozki might have been getting at?
Sure.
Could we go, could we refer to the Subcommittee and have that meeting take place within the next two weeks? And then we have the meeting on the 26th? Because as Solicitor Rice is saying, he's looking, you know, he's trying to gauge the interest of the board and I think for his client's interest, he's probably better off having a 6-1, 7-0 vote than a 4-3 vote.
So I'm not going to be available in the next two weeks for, to, for a Subcommittee meeting. Others maybe, if Rich wants to notice it, I guess that's fine. He controls the agenda for that Subcommittee. I don't know what the applicant's availability is within the next two weeks. And since we're not voting today, I get the sense that you've already gotten the feedback that you're going to get from the board. So you kind of have the answer to your question. What is the pleasure of the board? Unless anybody else has any other questions, I'm going to say we should move on to the next agenda item.
Well, do we come to a resolution then?
It sounds like the advice we're getting is that we don't need to vote one way or the other. We've already provided feedback to the applicant. So this is going to the Planning Commission one way or another unless it is the pleasure of the applicant to withdraw his, his petition.
So the applicant does not wish to withdraw the petition.
That's going to planning.
I'll, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll say again, I know that this applicant is very willing to continue to meet with folks. And if this board would like us to meet in front of a Subcommittee at a time that works, we're happy to come to that Subcommittee. If this board wants us to hold additional neighbor meetings, there were requests for that early on. This applicant can, was happy to, to do that. You know, there are some applicants that want to expedite the process and move things quickly and, and try and cut corners. This is not one of those applicants. They've gone to great lengths to, to get neighbor feedback. And, I mean, to Commissioner Booker's point earlier, they did not reach out to all of the commissioners because it was not their intention to, to do that. They felt like if they, if they worked the process with the neighbors and came up with a plan that was acceptable to the neighborhood, to the majority of the neighborhood, that of the neighborhood, that that would in fact be the thing that ultimately carried the day, not their discussions with each of you individually, as a courtesy to Commissioner Booker and to Commissioner Larkin, they reached out because of the significance of this project near their warts. Different applicants look at things different ways, so their goal, their focus from the very beginning was to meet with neighbors, get neighbor feedback, they did not want a plan that four of you liked and the entire neighborhood didn't, and it was something they could do but at massive resistance from the neighborhood, that didn't, that didn't compel them, what they wanted was a project they felt was acceptable and desirable to the people that were going to live next door to it, and that were going to see it every day, and that's where they landed on this, and it, it was not an easy process, you should all know that, it was a process that was time-consuming, it was labored, I, I mean, I know that some of these folks are, know Commissioner Booker and, and myself, and I've heard from those folks, and they've offered lots of feedback, feedback that ultimately changed where this plan was going. So, I think it's a good plan, but back to the beginning, this plan won't move forward unless the zoning changes, so while we can have a land development process, and we will, if ultimately this board says, we don't want this, we don't like it, the seven of us have decided irrespective of what the neighborhood thinks, we don't like it, then Solicitor Rice is correct, we'll see around. So, it's, there's two ways to do this, there's pull this board, push them hard, figure out what makes it work for you guys, and then come back and present that, and take the smoothest, shortest route with the neighbors, I've seen it, you've all seen it, then there's the other route which is, work hard with the neighbors and bring that back.
It sounds like you're threatening the board, it just, the optics don't sound good to me.
No, I don't feel that way, I, so-
I, I do.
My, um-
Not a threat at all, what I'm saying is, actually, it's the exact opposite, we're happy to do whatever the board wants, but why we got to this point, Sean, was, why we're here now and not a year ago, is they tried to do as much with the neighbors first, so that when they got back to you and you said, we want X, Y, and Z, they would not then have to say, okay, is this gonna, is this gonna work here, they feel like they've created a plan that they know works for the neighborhood, then you're the ultimate governing body, so they feel like they, they don't have to continue to jockey back and forth between the neighbors, they feel like they've gotten a plan that works, and then they bring it to you, but now, it's like every other development, Sean, there, there comes a point where it doesn't work, but this, you're not wed to this, to this application, you don't even know it, but I can tell you, my client, what they, what they need to make it work, because I've seen that, and I've seen those discussions with the neighbors, so in, in no way are we threatening, well, if we leave, then you've got this, it's still a piece of property that's owned by Eastern University, that's, it's not some slum, and we're not threatening a Walmart versus, you know, a beautiful retail establishment, so I, I take some exception to that comment, Sean.
I, I take exception to what you're saying, that, you're saying that, you know, if we do it this way, the way that I have, or we'll see around it, like, you know, like we'll get our way regardless, so that's how I take that comment.
I think, I think I-
That's, that's how I heard it, I'll just say, I'm, I'm not trying to-
Yeah, we would-
I'm just saying, that's, that's how I heard it, maybe I heard it wrong, but-
Let me correct it, I don't want you to have that in mind.
Okay, that's how I heard it, and that's why I took offense to it.
Okay, so I appreciate that, so what I'm saying is, without a rezoning, this applicant would withdraw its plan, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't work for them, but there may be applicants behind it that it would work for, so, there's no, I, I apologize that it came across that way.
I, I kind of like the process that John laid out, the idea of planning, Delaware County planning, and then coming back, and then I think that satisfies the need to talk to community development committee here on our, and who can then help advise the board moving forward.
I'll second Commissioner Borowski's take on that.
Okay, have you got what you need from us? This isn't an action item, but I see public comments, I'm going to say we're not voting on this, so we're not going to have public comment on this one, but we will come back and have public participation at the end, this goes to planning regardless of what we do today, so there's truly no action for us to take.
And then, just to be clear, if this board has a, a direction for us, we'll hear from the board or the township as to where you want us to be and when we should be there, is that, is that right? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so there's-
I can't say, I don't, I don't-
If you're planning commission.
I can't say, I, I would again urge the developer to meet with community, to meet with this board, I haven't heard anything from the neighbors other than negative, I haven't seen anything but a plan other than what we have, and I haven't discussed zoning other than what we've done here.
Okay.
So I, I think maybe you got to deal with the, maybe there's a deal, Jack talked about, there's a deal already made, but I, I haven't been a part of it, and I think that you should bring it to this group first before we, we, we start down that path of, we're going to change or we're not going to change, if we say, send it to zoning, if we say send it to planning commission, you effectively have already said we agreed to rezone, and I don't, and I don't think we should do that.
It doesn't matter, you don't understand the process, we can move along.
No, I understand completely the process.
Let's move to item 3G, resolution number 2020-111, authorizing Carroll Engineering to perform design, engineering, and permitting for the Spring Mill Road storm sewer cross pipe replacement in the amount of $13,400. Steve, could you read us in?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you, so this is, you basically said it all, there's an existing twin set of pipes on South Spring Mill Road, they deteriorated badly, we actually have plates in the road because the height of cover is very minimum, and the pipe is rotting, so the road is actually falling through, so in the amount of $13,400, we're requesting the board authorize Carroll Engineering to provide the design and permitting required, then we can then go out to bid to get this replaced.
I will, so move, is there a second?
A second.
Sorry, Commissioner, comment?
Steve, is this an emergency?
Not yet, Commissioner, no, we, I mean, it's, it's stable, so that may change in, if we get another remand of a hurricane, but right now, we do have plates on either end, and I think we can move along as we have here, as we're going here.
Is this going to pull resources from other projects that you're working on?
No, Carroll Engineering has been very good at hitting all the deadlines I've given them, so we've been very happy with their work, I told them as long as they make their deadlines, we would bring things before the board, and they have done that to a T.
Steve, can you give me Cross Streets on this, is this South Spring Mill, Spring Mill?
South Spring Mill at Conestoga, so if you're heading from the township building on Conestoga Road, you pass Sproll Road and the underpass-
Yeah.
First road on your left-
Yep.
And then maybe about 200 feet-
And I think, I think Creek goes right under there.
Yes, about 200 feet up from there is where this is.
Beyond Ithem Creek, as you start to climb the hill on Spring Mill.
It's, as you make a left on the Spring Mill, it's probably within 200 feet of the intersection.
Okay, so it's right before the creek?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can, can you guys, we're, we have a, can you guys take it outside? Distracting, can you go, go outside or else? Thank you.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment on this? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Farhi Othadias. Moving on to item 3H, ordinance number 2020-17, adoption, revising chapter six, 262, towing, adding new definitions, fees, and regulations for private and duty towers in the township. John, we've seen this before for introduction.
Yes.
Any updates?
It's, it's been introduced and it's advertised for adoption tonight, the police department has had substantial input into some of the amendments in here, some of the things that had come up previously, and I'll just call them out without going through, some of the fees were raised, some of the definitions were clarified in here, on page three, a couple of the items, page three and four, the ordinance, which were added, had to deal with when a vehicle's being removed from private property, so what was clarified in there, and this is under C2, notify the Radnor Township Police Department of removal of a vehicle from private property before leaving the lot, of the removal, provide a description and license number, and you do that by dialing 911 and contacting the offering, officer in charge. The next paragraph was something else that was added regarding the treatment of owners of towed vehicles with courtesy, and then paragraph four had to do with a situation where cars got towed, maybe on a Friday to a lot that wasn't open on Saturday or Sunday, so that was a requirement that was added, so the towers who tow cars from private property have to be available for release of a towed vehicle on a Saturday or Sunday. There's some additional licensing requirements that have been added, I don't know whether Officer Pyree wants to go through any of this, but we've been working on this since February or March, they're not substantial amendments, but they are some clarifications and some updates to deal with some problems that we had early, earlier this year, so it's up, it's up before the board again for enactment and adoption tonight, and I think that the department's here to answer any questions about the ordinance and how it would operate.
We've seen this ones before, do we have any questions?
What's the significance of all the, the methods of towing, either picking up the front wheels or back, why do we have, go through all that detail on exactly how the towing's done, is there some significance to that? Or is it to accommodate a certain towing vendor? Or is it just boilerplate that we just carried from another document?
I think that that's a lot of pre-existing, but I'll, I don't know whether Officer Pyree wants to address that.
No, Commissioner Booker, that's just, that's just addressed in the definitions, as far as when your, when your vehicle is actually hooked, it also addresses it, if the owner comes back within a certain period of time while the vehicle's being hooked, so that covers your question.
How, how long before we actually implement this, right? So, right now, if we adopt this tonight, when does it actually get implemented? Because where you, we don't have towing, are we doing towing right now in light of our restrictions, or, or free parking, is free, is it still free parking in Wayne?
I don't, I don't-
So, so as we have free parking, so when do we anticipate that this would go into effect and start being enforced and carried out?
Well, you have, you have an existing ordinance on the books, that's been amended two or three times over the last seven or eight years, so-
Understood, but nobody's getting towed right now.
So this, this is just an update of some, and addressing some issues that the police department identified, so, you know, this-
Again, John, my question is, when are we going, when are we going to have vendors starting to tow people again where this is going to come into play? Because we don't have it now, if that's not the case, if we have it now, then tell me we have it now and it's going on.
Commissioner Booker, this, we are, we are towing as we speak, this basically, this second reading basically just changed, addresses the changes in the definitions, we modified going after the predator towing, again, updating the fee schedules and whatnot, we also, as far as the licensing and whatnot, we took into account some discrepancies we found versus the, the classes of towing that some of the tow operators were using, some of the larger trucks, you need to have a CDL license and whatnot, and we found one or two that did not.
And remember, you're dealing with private tow and duty tow, you know, there's two different, the liquor license parking lot, that's a private towing situation.
That's a private towing situation which really precipitated these changes.
Well, and the, and the duty tow too, there were some changes that have been talked about for a number of years, but there's two different things, so there's still towing going on.
So when do we anticipate the private tow requirements of this are going to be implemented and carried out?
Be immediately.
So we're going to start towing people immediately from the-
No, private towing is a private towing company that has a agreement with somebody that owns a parking lot or has it posted, that person calls the private tower and then takes the car away, that's not a, a police or a duty tow, it's a different situation.
You guys, you guys are tough, okay. We're doing towing now, but we're not towing people from the liquor store, which was the cause of, of the consternation.
That is not-
So when are we going, right, so when is that going to start happening again?
It is happening as we speak.
What?
It is happening as we speak. It's a private towing. If you look, Commissioner, if you look on page two of the amendment, down in section A, the private owner shall be present at the time of the removal of the vehicle if she, he or she is available, during the operating hours, the property owner or designee must contact the tower, so basically it addressed the predatory towing from somebody sitting across the lot and spying on cars versus now the, the, either the manager or whatnot has to call the, the tower directly.
That's private towing, the duty, the duty tow is when there's an accident and the police are involved in a situation, or I guess towing from places that are parked, that are posted no parking.
Okay.
The police get involved.
All right, let me, let me, let me get a, let me get a, a more simpler ques, a simpler question then.
The department's not involved.
All right, because you guys are avoiding my question here, and I, I understand, I understand, how long will we continue to have free parking in Wayne so that this towing issue, the private tow in Wayne does not become a, starts to become a problem again? That's my question, when do we go back to regular operations in Wayne and start collecting money every day at these parking meters?
So I'll, I'll jump in there, the, the conversation about the parking in Wayne is, is exclusive of this ordinance, the, the two were never linked.
I, I'm not linking them, I'm asking, I'm, they're, they're linked in that, it's towing that happens because of parking, so they are linked, okay, you could, what, you could disagree with me, but I, I think that to most people that they'll think that they're linked.
Yeah, so, but the answer specific to the parking in Wayne is, you know, that, that's something that we continue to work with the Wayne businesses on, and the, the resolution that the board passed in the spring extended the outdoor dining and relaxed those conditions until the end of October, so at a minimum, we were trying to align the parking situation with that resolution, so as things stand now, the end of October, I would anticipate requests for all of that to be extended, but that has not happened yet as we sit here tonight, but-
But, but even then, then we're getting towards Christmas and Thanksgiving, maybe we don't want to implement it until the springtime or January.
Well, yeah, I mean, those, all of those things will be considered, the, the one thing I do want to stress is that in areas where there's two-hour limits, while there's no, you don't have to pay to park, the police department and the parking enforcement folks have been enforcing the two-hour, not to the extent of towing, but potentially ticketing.
So we are issuing tickets for people who stay past two hours right now on a regular basis, or is that just a, that's not on a regular basis?
No, on a regular basis, and that's been the case for a while, just, again, trying to keep the parking lots in front of the businesses, again, we're talking mostly about the Wayne area, trying to keep those parking spaces turning over instead of employees parking there or business owners parking there all day, so.
But we don't tow in that instance, just a ticket?
Correct. As I understand, I, I haven't gotten a phone call on that yet, and I'm pretty sure I would've.
Thank you.
Officer Pyree, Sergeant Stanson, and Solicitor Rice, I wasn't here for the introduction of this ordinance change, but I, but I support the, the changes that were made, and the answer a lot of the concerns I had after the incident at, at the private parking lot, and just reading through, I just want to clarify, so if a car's towed, that car can't leave the lot until the police department's notified, correct? And then, and then that-
I'm sorry, yes, that's correct.
And then that, the, the tower has to be available an hour after calling that vehicle in so that the resident, if able, can come collect the car.
That's also correct.
I mean, I, I think that's a, a great addition, any reason we chose an hour and not two hours?
Yes, sir, most of our towers are local, 15, 20 minutes from the township, I think is the farthest, I think, I think our farthest is somewhere in Conshohocken.
Okay, and then, if towed on a Friday, there, the hours are nine to three on both Saturday and Sunday?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a big change, and I think that's probably the most critical piece of this ordinance change, so I appreciate the work you guys did on this, and, and fully supportive of the, the amendments made.
One, one question, so, let's say I leave and the tow truck comes and they hook my car, and it's up. So let's say I leave and the tow truck comes and they hook my car and it's up. Is there a maximum on a fee on what it would be to release it? So they're just... So they can essentially hook the car, get it all towed, and say, hey, if you want us to at least put it down to the level so you can get it back again, there's going to be a charge for that. So they may not take it to a lot and have it impounded, but they can hook it and say, we've already put the hooks on it, there's a fee for us to relinquish it.
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's under the hooking fees, Section B, Part 1. It's a $95 charge. The operator is to give the owner a 15-minute window to say to go hit the ATM or something like that to collect money to release the vehicle on scene.
So they still can exercise some kind of fee, just not as much?
Just on that, just one question. So if there's, they see a car, private towing, right, private, they hook the car and it's up in the air, they stand there with it for an hour?
No, sir. What happens is they, once they hook the car, they have to call 911, contact the officer in charge, be it the sergeant, whoever's in charge at the time.
And as soon as they get in touch, then they can go?
Notify them with the license plate number, the type of car, and then they can leave. If the owner comes back in that time period...
Then they could pay the $95 to that guy and he can drop it?
Correct.
Is there any additional commissioner comment? Staff comment? Public comment? Calling the vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3I, Resolution Number 2020-114, adopting a gift acceptance policy. I will move for the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And I'd like to move to make a slight amendment and ask a question.
Please do.
So when, so Commissioner Farhi had reached out to me. He had wanted to lower the threshold of the amounts in, on page three, item, section three of this from $7,500, which when Commissioner Mulroney and I worked on this, we thought was, you know, in line with the charter and what the township manager can approve and whatnot. But he would like a lower amount, so I would like to amend that to $5,000. Commissioner Farhi, that's... Okay. So I would like to make a motion to amend section three from $7,500 to $5,000.
Does that move? Heard a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Resolution is so amended, is there any commissioner comment to the amended $5,000 limit on the... Sorry, is there any commissioner comment to the amended resolution? Commissioner Borowski, you had said you had a question, so let's start with you.
So I just have a question around open space, and I know when, I'll let Mr. White come back to his seat before I say this. When we first worked on this and I sent it off to Mr. Wafer and Mr. Rice for their input, Mr. White, you made note that when it comes to the gift acceptance of any sort of open space or land that we already have the ordinance. Do we need to note that in this or no? Okay, all right, that was my only question. I just didn't know if we needed to note that we have that or that just automatically kicks in no matter what.
Yeah, I mean, the only context I'll provide that supports that is the open space policy, after reading through it, is geared towards when the township goes to acquire open space, not for donated real estate back to the township.
Do we feel that this is taken care of, then, I guess, in section two, I think, of this, when it comes to open space as a piece? Okay.
Yeah, this, you know, what happens when the township acquires open space and that open space policy was written because of, there's a state law called the Deed and Donated Act, and there's been a lot of old land that was deeded and donated over years to municipalities that then wanted to develop it. So if you get a donation of open space, you know, you need to have a formal acceptance of that, so it's in the meetings of a minute, in the minute, and that attaches some of the requirements for the Deed and Donated Act, which is a state act. But we're, this covers, the policies fine, we don't need to do anything else with the ordinances.
I just want to make sure there's no, like, little loopholes or anything like that. Okay. All right. I'm good.
So Lisa and Maura, how do we guarantee in this that the contributions are not being donated to the township for some future favor such as an approval or other benefit to the donor? Where, it says in here it should not be used for political or other purposes or personal, but does it get to that question? Where exactly does it get to that question with respect to a single gift or with respect to ongoing gifts?
You know, there is nothing in the ordinance that addresses that other than the part that you referred to, which I think covers it. Otherwise, it is the duty of this board to make sure that in negotiations about a gift like this, that we are transparent and above board.
Can I offer an amendment to that issue?
Please, go ahead.
So I would like to offer an amendment to the resolution to state that the donor or entity giving over now $5,000 collectively during a rolling 12-month period should not have business currently before the board or in front of the board six months after stated donation.
I'll second that. I think that's appropriate. I don't think that the line that I referenced quite gets there.
So there's a...
I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
We don't have comment. We just go right to vote on the ancillary motions. So I hear a motion and a second. All in favor of the amendment say...
Can I, wait, can I, Jake, can you just repeat that so I can, like, fully process?
No.
You can't repeat it. Oh, what, it only, it only came out one time?
I understand the amendment to be that the donor should not have any pending business before the board or any business six months thereafter. Did I get that right?
If donating more than $5,000 collectively over a rolling 12-month period, so not a calendar year, but a rolling 12-month period, and can't make multiple donations that equal over $5,000.
All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Nay. I didn't catch which way you voted.
You know, I'm still, you're driving too fast. I can't even... Well, I'm trying to run through the scenarios in my head of what...
The scenario is like if Little League has something gone before the board.
Problem is, we can't restrict applicants from statutory and constitutional rights to petition us once they've already given them money.
Yeah, I have, I guess, I, you know, just playing it out, I think that we are looking for something nefarious that, you know, could currently happen without this gift policy. And this gift policy, I think, puts more structure around what we're accepting and how we're talking about it publicly. So just, you know, playing out the suggested amendment, to me, seems like it's onerous. If I were to be a generous person and give $5,000 worth of property or cash, and eight months later, something in my life happens that I have to come business before the board and I'm now barred from that...
Well, you can do that, because I said six months.
Ah.
Whatever it is, six months.
Five months and eight, five months and, you know, three weeks later, something happens and I have to come before the board.
I understand, I understand.
So I have trouble with that.
The intent is to go on, I think, in the language transparency, and, you know, for me, it's the perception before the board and before the residents. So can I rephrase and offer a second amendment? And that would be, you know, any donor giving over $5,000 collectively during a rolling 12-month period should not have any business currently before the board.
Time of the gift.
I guess that, you know, that is...
I will second that. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Amendment passes, so we have two amendments. The first amends it to $5,000. The second amendment is that no donation shall be accepted if offered by a donor who in the prior 12 months has offered the township and the township has accepted $5,000 or more.
Current business before the board.
Yeah, I left off the most important part. Sorry about that. If you've given us $5,000 or more in the past 12 months and you have present business before the board, then the township will not accept the funds.
So that, like, precludes, like, any institution from helping out the township? So if you had a nonprofit that had a land development, say, like, tonight, say, a large institution, and they decided, hey, you know, for the longest time, we wanted to help out with this street or this sidewalk, they can't do that? I mean, because some, that kind of, you know, some institutions or entities always have a ton of business with this township, so that would kind of say no. I mean, for instance, like, Little League, I know, always has some kind of, they're dealing with some kind of field, this, that, and the other, and they're either making just different donations that sometimes they're hard to calculate, whether it is a cash gift or it's a batting cage or it's an improvement, and they're always asking for one thing or So I, looking at my vote now, and this is a problem when we cram these things without having a chance to think about it, I'll say that my vote was wrong. I understand what Commissioner Abel says, where you don't want malfeasance, but I think that we will get a run, we should get a run of some kind of what these gifts are. We're not having people banging on the door to give us money. So whatever that is, if it's maybe as small as a dollar to $10 million, maybe we should get something in the packet, not for the township, for the commissioners, but as well as the residents to see. So I, you know, I mean, I don't, I'm not happy with this vote and how this is going, and this is kind of, we're moving too fast of a pace that none of us can absorb it and really react with a...
And I think, you know, we're not playing out some scenarios. So we have recently just, I can't remember if we passed it or just discussed it, about creating a capital fund where if somebody's doing a builder, you know, some building in front of, if they've got some business in front of us and we're asking them to consider a donation to a capital fund, is that going to be precluded because we've now put in this amendment?
But that was part of, to be part of land, a land development.
Yeah, that would be a fee in lieu of a waiver of specific required improvements under the subdivision ordinance.
Right, but would it be captured under this because it comes, it becomes a donation to...
No, it's not a donation.
Okay.
It's just a, you know, there's a request from the builder to waive, say, curbs and sidewalks on one side of the street.
Right.
So you can negotiate a fee...
Right.
...in lieu of that actually happening, and that's okay under the MPC and under your SADA ordinance.
So that, but, so those types of dealings, if you will, we're comfortable with. This is a business in front of the board, we're asking them to pay a fee, it's a negotiated, it's basically, it's a negotiated money into a fund.
Correct.
So we are now creating a gift acceptance policy that will not affect that, I understand, but if you're applying the same logic to somebody having business in front of the board and providing a gift, I mean, you know, I just think that we're, I think we haven't played it out. I also, to echo Commissioner Farhi, you know, there are businesses who sponsor events. They also have business in front of the township. Those are separate issues, and, you know, I don't think that anything in the past has ever come to my attention that there was anything nefarious about sponsoring Little League and asking for, you know, a waiver for a curb cut for a business or whatever. I'm making this up as I'm spinning here. So I'm just trying to sort of work through, would the amendment as presented sort of, you know, be a barrier to people trying to be generous? The intention of creating this gift policy, I believe that Commissioner Borowski and I were really more concerned about donor intent and making sure that the intention of a gift lives long beyond the board who was sitting when it was received. We've had some large donations in the past, and then there were some questions about what that money was intended to be for or what they expected to get for making that gift. This was intended to avoid those situations. So I just, yeah, I guess I'm still uncertain about the amendment as presented. I'm not necessarily against it, but I still think we need to kind of play it out of it.
Yeah, I'll just follow up real quick. So based on the amendment that I also voted for, it's going to be difficult for me to support it based on that, based on what you're saying. I like this. I know Lisa and Maura, you've put a ton of work into this, but if we're gonna, I just think it's just too vague of what you said, so I can't vote for this. If this could come back, unfortunately, without that in there, I'm going to be...
Wait, what are you asking for, Sean? I have, I cannot follow you anymore. I don't know where you are on this.
Basically, to rescind what that last vote was, because the...
The amendment, you would like the amendment removed, the one that restricts people from making a donation who currently have business before the board.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't think that there's a whole lot of people who are looking to spend a lot of money in gifts to the township. I'm not sure that this is worth the time that we're spending on it, but what I will say is, I do not find it terribly onerous to say that if you have gone to the township and you have said, I would like a waiver for a curb cut or whatever else, and during that two-week period that you're waiting for us to make a decision on your curb cut, you happen to make a donation of more than $5,000, the township to say, we can't take your money right now, you've got something pending. Two weeks after that...
We can say that. We can say that whenever we want.
According to the amendment that we just passed, my understanding is if you have current business pending before the township, we will not accept a $5,000 gift or more.
Right.
The overall general principles of this, number two says, donations will not become the property of the township until accepted by the township consistent with this policy. So ultimately, we have to accept it anyway. It would have to come before us anyway.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, our policy can be every gift has to come before the board...
So that's a separate vote?
...the Board of Commissioners regardless of circumstance, if it's more than $5,000.
It's already in here. It's number two, E, under general, two, E.
Then we're just finding ourselves that we will not... Our policy, according to this amendment, would be we would not accept this according to our policy when it came before us. We would tell the applicant, come back in two weeks after we've made a decision one way or the other. We could choose not to have that policy, in which case, you know, we'll do whatever we see fit at the time. We'll make a game day call about whether the application or the donation is intended to game the system in some way. I don't find it terribly onerous to say, we're not going to take your $5,000 while your application's pending, but if there's a motion and a second, and I've heard two different people asking, could we amend the amendment, then we can vote on that.
Let me just follow that. So if someone does, if they have business with the township and it's pending, and they do for a separate reason want to give a donation, that would have to come to the board for acceptance, or we just won't accept it at all?
We won't.
According to this policy, as I read it, anything over $5,000 comes to the board.
So it would come to the board regardless?
Comes to the board regardless. If you have business pending before the board, so you want to do your curb cut and you need a waiver for it, then our policy would say, we cannot accept it. I'm not sure how we can bind ourselves in the future nor future boards, so someone on this board would just say, hey, we have a policy, we've got to say no, and it would still basically be up to the pleasure of the township. If we really, really, really want their $5,001 for Little League, we could say yes, I guess.
Mr. President, can I jump in right, just real quick? I'm not sure that the amendment, the voting was completed.
It was unanimous.
I think we were at 3-3 and...
There was an amended amendment.
But did the...
To the first one... The first one failed for lack of majority, cause it was 3-3 and we didn't get a response from the fourth.
All right.
The first one was, um, any pending business and any business within the next 12 months, which of course, we wouldn't know.
Six months.
Six months, which still, we can't go into the future because, in my opinion, because we can't restrict your ability to come before the board based on gifts we've previously accepted. When that failed for lack of majority, the motion that was then seconded and passed unanimously, but it sounds like there may be.
No, yeah, Maura voted against it, but it was six to one.
Okay, six, one then, um, was, uh, just if you had pending business before the board, our policy would be that we do not accept gifts from you over $5,000.
Yeah, which is a good policy.
I'm not offended by that, but I hear two no's, so if we want to have an amended amendment?
I mean, I would say no to it.
But I, I just think that we always have the right to do that. We always have the right to say, "Why are you coming today with business in front of the board?"
We can't hear, your mic's, mic's off.
Sorry. We always have the right to do that. We always have to write the que, we always have the right to question the motives of somebody who has business in front of the board, who may be coming with cash in hand and asking us to look upon them favorably. So I don't know that it has to be in the policy. We always have the right to say, "We, we don't trust where this is coming from."
Okay, but how are we gonna know that?
We have the right to reject any donation, so then there'd be no reason for a gift ban.
No, I think it's a legitimate point, but we have to, I mean, we might not know what it is, right? If we have it in here as a, as a policy, if we, if you have pending business, whether it's a land development plan, or whether it's a bill, it's a building permit, or whether it's a grading permit, we're not gonna accept the $5,000 gift while that's pending. I, I.
What I like about it is it stops conversations like these, because it's just, it's just, it, it's full stop. Move on.
I think it at least, and what it does is it creates a guideline for people reading it, you know, so if I'm somebody who has something in front of the board, I'm not gonna come and say, "Hey, let me give you $10,000," because that could put my, cause then I don't wanna come, as Commissioner Underlee says, before the board to have this conversation.
Right, and they can give $4,000, and it's up to Bill to make sure he catches it and flags it. Um, but they can't give four, Commissioner Abel's point was, they can't give 4,000 four months in a row, or 10 months in a row, right? So if it's under 5,000, it'll be up to, uh, to Bill to talk with Kevin. Do they have an application? Yes, they do. Is it invol, you know, or no, they don't, and it's up to, it's up to him, that's up to them then.
So could I ask, ask a question and then, and then?
Nope, you're in the breach with us.
Propose a, uh, yeah. Uh, so under that scenario, if someone does come in, if they have something before the board and they come in with a $4,999 donation, uh, we would be, by policy, allowed to accept it, and it wouldn't necessarily have to come in front of the board. Is that correct?
I mean, do, do you want us to, we can lower it to $500, which is what was originally proposed. I mean, what we're also trying to make it is not, it's not supposed to be so onerous, and I think 5,000 is a good threshold around sponsorship. So if, you know, Tammy has a sponsor that's going to, you know, sponsor the Easter egg, whatever extravaganza or something like that, you know, she has the ability to accept those, you know, with your approval.
Sure.
However, you know, you handle that internally still, she has that ability. I mean, we don't wanna make this something that handcuffs you, but what we wanna do is make it something so that the board is aware, which we know in the past has happened, that we are unaware of gifts coming to the township, decisions are made on how they're gonna be spent, or how things are gonna happen. Um, we've had that happen. I think this is just a good kind of check and balance, and the board can be comfortable, and the staff knows kind of, you know, what the expectation is also.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
Yeah, Bill, but if you put it, if you put it in the packet, then the public can see it as well. So it's a second set of eyes as well.
So, but it, is it the expectation of the policy that every donation gets submitted to the board?
That is not in this policy.
Well, I think that, that you should have, that something like that should be done, then at least the, at least the commissioners.
Sean, we just amended the amount per your concern.
But I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna know the amount as well. I thought it's gonna be public record of who makes a gift.
I mean, any donation is a matter of public record and is subject to the Sunshine Act.
Why don't you leave it up to your manager to decide what he, if it's $250, do you wanna know?
No, that's fine, but.
Leave it up to Bill to keep you notified.
If it's $499.99, then, then I think that sends a red flag.
You know what? I don't think, I don't think it's.
Sorry. Look, we're gonna wanna recognize donations. I mean, this, we're acting like everybody's coming with this, like I said, this is not a nefarious deal. We don't have people knocking down the doors trying to, you know, grease our palms so that they can move things through the, the township. It's just, it's, you know.
Yes, we do. Most of the time, these gifts are intended to exert subtle influence.
I don't think so. I actually, I disagree with the commissioner. I think that when people make, you know, sponsorships for the Little League, they are not trying to curry favor. They're committed to their community. I think when people wanna put, um, you know, wildflower seeds on the side of a barren hill, or they wanna, you know, whatever these gifts are, it's usually motivated by goodness, and it's usually motivated by a sense of community. And I think that.
No.
This gift acceptance policy is grown out of the idea that we want to acknowledge the gifts, recognize the contribution to the township, and appreciate what the donor's intent was when they made the contribution. It also protects the, uh, the township from, you know, not knowing what the money was there for, that was given under a different board, or maybe a different staff member accepted it. And now we have a record of when the gift was given, why it was given, and what the intention was. And that was what has been lacking in some prior, um, negotiations, and I think we were just trying to make sure that it was, um, creating a record of, of the gifts, and creating a record that will survive us if the money is still there to be used.
Still, if somebody comes and gives $4,999.99, could you please mention it at a meeting so that we can steward them and let them know that we are grateful and thankful? Even $3,000.
I mean, to, to the extent that we're, we're looking to, to thank donors, um, you know, we can, we can look at some way to acknowledge those that are less than 5,000. I don't know what that is off the top of my head, cause I, I am not a, I mean, we might have more donations than I can think of off the top of my head, but most of them are much, much, much smaller than that. The only other bucket of water that I like to throw into the mud that we're in is, um, you know, just, it just, with regard to the, the cap on $5,000 and no business in front of the township, um, there may be a time, uh, at some point when a particular entity wants to donate to the township for whatever reason, and, you know, sometimes our land development, or sometimes our approval processes for projects tend to span years, uh, we are basically telling, you know, "That person or that entity, you're off, you don't even think about it for years," and it, there may be an opportunity we're missing, where they wanna donate money to a project that the board is aware of. So, um, with that amendment, we are, we're, we would be eliminating that opportunity. Um, so just, I just wanna.
We understand, we understand that. We understand that, and that's a, the choice we wanna make, because we wanna make sure that those decisions are free from any undue influence.
But in any event, that donation, under this policy being over 5,000, would have to come to you for approval anyway.
No, it would be rejected.
Well, now it would be rejected, but under the policy as written initially, it, that person would have to come in front of the board in a public process and say, "I understand that I've got land development X, Y, and Z, but I also understand that the township wants to do project Y, and I'd like to contribute $10,000 to that project."
There's a conflict there. It's not appropriate to take that gift.
But then we wouldn't take the gift if there was a conflict, but we don't wanna bar them from having a completely separate, generous, you know, heartfelt contribution to their community, and they also have some business going on. Their business owner will always have business.
Richard, those lines blur.
I would like a point of order, and I'm, I'm going to, I am going to ask to rescind the last amendment that was voted on.
Second, I second it.
We can't, we can't, we just, we just voted that.
I heard a motion and a second.
Point of order, point of order?
No, I heard a motion and a second to restrict.
Robert's rules, the only person that can rescind is someone who has.
I heard a motion and amendment.
Can't revert on the same item.
I heard a motion and a second to amend. The amendment was to remove the restriction.
But, but, but Jack, Jack, a point of order, Robert's rule. Can't, can't vote.
This is not the same item, it's a motion to amend. It has similar subject matter.
No, it's the same, we voted for it, and now we're voting to remove it.
Aye.
To rescind?
To rescind. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails for lack of reason.
Actually.
I think that there's enough stopgap measures, and I do agree, while they, it could, I think there's the optics of that that are, could potentially be concerning. So I think I'm comfortable with something, with leaving that in here. But again, there's always the discretion of the township manager. So if Bill comes to us and he's like, "I know that, but this, and they're gonna do this, and it's totally not related to this," you know, there's always that opportunity for us to have that discussion, and then that is the board having that discussion.
This takes the board's discretion away. It says, "If you have business in front of the board, you can't give us any money," period. No board discretion. That's why I am against it.
But they can give it as soon as the, as soon as the business before the board's over, then they can give it.
To Bill White's point, the business could be three, four years that they're working, you know, on a project.
We'll wait three or four years. It won't be that long. We'll just, we'll just have to wait till the end. That's.
Why would, why would you ban, um, taking the generosity of a community member? Why would you ban it?
Again, because it's a conflict, and it can be, it's either a conflict or the appearance of a conflict, and we shouldn't go there. So.
But that can be determined by this board, and if we feel that it's conflict or appearance of a conflict, that's when we say no, not before we've ever heard this.
We have so many other important things to deal with, and some pressing issues that we don't wanna be bogged down with that. Jack, Jack actually, and Jake effectively resolved this by eliminating that six months out clause. That's, all right, six months out, but if you, if you have something pending right now, no gifts until that's resolved. So anyway, it's voted. Done.
Hey, President Larkin, can I move on to, uh, the next question that I have?
How long's it gonna take?
Well.
I'm only kidding.
Again, it's a question. Um, so I, I don't have, I don't have the language in front of me, and there wasn't the, um, the draft on the table. Is anywhere in the, in the draft language, um, dealing with anonymous donors?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Anonymous donors will be disclosed, uh, not to the public, but to the board.
Is there a threshold on, on when, or is it all donations regardless of the amount?
Sorry, what was the question?
Is there an amount attached to that, or is it all donations from an anonymous donor have to be revealed to the board?
Why wouldn't an anonymous donor be subject to the $5,000?
So what if an anonymous donor donates $500?
Then that's at the discretion of the manager to accept that. What difference does it make if it's an, it's not anonymous, it would be known to the staff, and then, I don't understand, I don't understand the question.
If you wanna show up in the dead of night with just like cash in a sack and leave the township building, and we never know, then.
Well, no, it's like the Willow's anonymous donor. We're just not gonna acknowledge you by name.
Okay, I really don't think you can call that gentleman an anonymous donor anymore.
Well, he was for a while, and then he was outed, but, but, uh, you know, it's very similar. Yes, Madam Vice President.
Do we answer your question?
So, I'm, just to be clear, somebody will, in a, in essence, there's no anonymous donor. Somebody will always know who's providing.
The only way to be truly anonymous would be, I was, I was joking before, but the only way to be truly anonymous would be to just leave the cash in a bag, because otherwise, somebody's gotta accept it from them.
Their cameras.
And, and Commissioner Mulrooney actually brought up the example that, you know, is one of the concerns I have, is the wildflower seeds. So we, we passed that resolution, and included in that was a anonymous donation for the seeds, which was probably valued at over $5,000, and this board does not know who made that donation. But we partnered with that group to reseed the hill.
I don't think that's anonymous. It was, the seeds are not anonymous, right?
It was Weeds Inc. and an anonymous donor. It was, so there was anonymous.
Okay.
So. There was an anonymous donation as part of that resolution.
Okay, but we're looking backwards, and this policy's looking forwards.
And I'm, and I'm, my question is, in a similar scenario where we partner with a group and there's an anonymous donation as part of that partnership.
That would have to be disclosed, per this, per the, per this, um, language that we're putting forward, that would have to be disclosed.
Even under $5,000, because the donation would go to the partner, not to the township.
That was, that was gonna be my point, is that how a donor gets what they're contributing is not gonna be known to us. I mean, if, so in, you know, in a, in that scenario, the donor gave it to Weeds Inc., and Weeds Inc. moved it forward to the township. So I could have somebody give me $6,000 and not tell you where I got the money and donate it to the township, it's my gift. So it doesn't matter where the, where it comes from before it gets to me.
Yeah, I was, I was uncomfortable with that partnership, not knowing where the money was coming from, knowing what had happened on the hill.
Right.
And I'd be uncomfortable with your scenario that you just laid out.
Right.
But if I add, add a little bit to that, I mean, if, if Radnor Wayne Little League does a GoFundMe, uh, to raise money for, I don't know, I wanna make something up that doesn't cause a stir, but higher, higher fences for the outfield, cause the kids are just wailing home runs for fun. If they do a GoFundMe, uh, there's opportunities within the GoFundMe to make anonymous donations, uh, and then Radnor Wayne Little League comes to the township to say, "Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna put up all new fences for you, the township," uh, and, and many of those could be under five, will probably will be under $5,000. That would be problematic if that were, if the policy was intended to or amended to restrict that kind of activity, cause that does happen. I mean, Radnor Wayne Little League accepts donations, other entities that, uh, we partner with for various things accept donations that are once removed from the township, and we are not party to where those are coming from.
But the GoFundMe would be run by Radnor Wayne Little League, which is a 501(c)(3), and then if they collect those funds, they are giving it to the township. So in effect, the gift is from the Radnor Wayne Little League. I mean.
Just like Weeds Inc.
Just like my $6,000 that somebody gave me becomes a gift from me. So it doesn't matter where I get my money if I decide to give the money forward. So I think what we meant by the anonymity of donors is to protect a donor from being, you know, publicly put on a wall, or noted on the website, or otherwise put themselves out there when they didn't seek to have that kind of public recognition, when they wanted to keep it a little bit quieter. So that, it's, it was more intended to protect a donor from sort of having a public presentation of a gift if they didn't want to. And a lot of this, I mean, a lot of this stems from sort of the world of nonprofit, that both Lisa and I have been fundraisers for nonprofits. So it's a lot of care and stewardship of the donors is the, is the intention behind the gift acceptance agreement, and protecting donor intent for the gift, and keeping the township aligned with what the original intent of that don, of that donation was.
Can I ask one, one question? So technically, the Garrett Hill Fourth of July parade, or they get money from the township, and so they're always having some business with the township. It just seems that, or maybe even the library, or some other organization, so if they wanna give something back, or give some of that money back, or do something with that money, or show appreciation, I feel like they're handcuffed. Um, I, I, the more, the, we didn't have enough time to really absorb this, and the more I think about it, the, the less it makes sense to me.
The library doesn't have any business pending before the township right now that I'm aware of.
But, but they take a lot of money, again, some, some fire, um, even the parades, um, they. But, but they take a lot of money, again, some fire, even the parades, they, they get money. They are, you know, they are, and, hey, John, I'll let you, I'll let you use the word, a party to the township.
I don't follow, I don't follow what you're saying, Sean.
I do.
Yeah, this is, so what, what this clause...
Should we table this resolution?
What this amendment, or what it, what we've done is basically prevent a quid pro quo, ooh, did I say that? You know, a quid pro quo kind of thing. If, you know, if we are giving money to the library, and then the library wants to come and donate some of the money back to the township, which I have to say, probably wouldn't happen, but...
They're not going to donate it back, they would give it in another form.
As what? Like, I don't understand.
Explain to me a time when, when the library, sitting on excess capital and excess donations, is going to decide that they're going to give it back to Radnor...
It's not that, but, but, but it doesn't have to be the library. I'm using them as, I'm using them as an example.
Okay, but, but...
You know, I mean, it could be something with Little League, it could be something with the parade, where they don't use the money that they thought they were going to do, and then they want to give it back, or use that money for, say, say you give money to the Garrett Hill Parade, and they don't use all that money for some reason, and then they want to do a beautiful...
Why is the Garrett Hill Parade not going to save it for the following year?
So we could sit here until next...
Damien, Damien, I don't know, Damien, and you don't know either, because you're not, you're not privy to that part. Let me answer that question, Mr. President.
Point of order, Sean.
You're stretching beyond what this policy is intended to do. We're grasping at straws here, we're wasting time.
We could sit here and think of scenarios in our heads from now until, you know, next year.
Mr. President, can I call, can I call the vote?
I think that what this has done, all we're trying to do is prevent, quite frankly, us receiving $250,000 for something that, and a decision being made on where it's going to be spent without it coming to the board.
I'm going to choose to interpret as a motion to call the vote in a second, so I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have staff and public comment. I should have done that. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
This is public comment on the resolution, not the amendments, the...
Well, the public, the resolution as amended, but yeah. Okay, all in favor then, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes, six to one.
What about Maura?
Okay, moving to four reports of standing committees of the board. Hearing none, do we have any new business?
Just one item. Real quickly, I'd like to recognize the Radnor Police Department in their support of the Radnor Girls Lacrosse fundraiser last evening on North Wayne Avenue. Several officers stepped up and participated in helping with the Ergathon that Radnor Girls Crew, I'm sorry, did I say lacrosse? It is so late. I apologize. I'm going to pay for that when I get home. Radnor Girls Crew, thank you, Lisa. Anyway, I just want to recognize those officers in the support of the Police Department in, in helping out. It's tough times in terms of fundraising, and they, they did a fantastic job of helping out, so, thank you.
Any additional new business?
Yeah, President Larkin, just, just one item, and this is, you know, probably a discussion for a meeting down the road and for the engineer, but as, as we hopefully will start to reopen the, the business district, and parking becomes a topic of discussion again, one, one thing that I would like to explore is creating an entrance to the AT&amp;T lot off of Conestoga, because right now it's, you know, if you're not from the area, it's difficult to know where that is, and, and that's an underutilized parking lot where we could probably meet some demand and, and take the pressures off of that downtown Wayne area, which, which is highly sought after, and it's not too far of a walk to the shops and restaurants.
That sounds like a good idea. I'd like that signage, additional entrances, whatever we need to do. Public participation?
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Avenue. I have a master's degree from Eastern and also attended the seminary. I think it's important for you to know, the reason that Eastern bought that land from Valley Forge Military Academy was they were going to move the seminary to that land, build buildings and dorms. They would have had 150 students in and out all day. They had evening classes for the seminary because they were appealing to people downtown, primarily African-American churches. So the idea to build 20 houses on that land is a vast improvement. So I, I've been around here long enough, and I knew what the backstory was, but Eastern could never pull it off, so the seminary sort of died. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Hearing none, I will move to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, we stand adjourned.